Good evening and welcome to the Kaliki Valley Neighborhood Board number sixteen meeting. Today is Wednesday, October, oh, yep, October ninth, twenty twenty four, and it is now seven o'clock PM. Rules of speaking, anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon, and when recognized by the chair, to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes, and those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comments, questions, et cetera. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Please silence all electronic devices. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law Hawaii Revise Statute, Chapter ninety-two. Specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda. Materials can be found at our Kaliki Valley Google Drive link. First on the agenda is city monthly reports for Honolulu Fire Department. Is Honolulu Fire Department online or in person today?
Just HPD.
Just HPD, yeah, okay. If, uh, if I, if the Honolulu Fire Department is not here, we can always table them for now if they do come back later on, and we can move on to Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me clearly?
It's a little quiet, but we can hear you. We're boosting you up right now.
Okay, okay. I wonder if I can adjust.
I think we can.
You guys hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, hello again. This is Lieutenant Creighton Artico at the Kaliki Police Station. I'm one of the nighttime commanders. I'm happy to see you all again. Uh, let me give you the statistics for the month of September. There was one aggravated assault, uh, two auto thefts, two burglaries reported, uh, one robbery, two sex assaults, uh, three simple assaults, uh, eight basic thefts, and two thefts from vehicles. Total calls for service was up a bit, uh, six hundred thirty-three total calls for service in the area, um, which is up from five hundred eighty-nine in the month of August. A tip of the month, as we're, um, approaching the holiday season, uh, you guys are gonna see more and more, um, scam attempts, uh, that's gonna be coming into your, to your cellphones. Um, even I, uh, lately, I've been getting a lot of, uh, text messages that appear to be from legitimate, um, sources. Uh, when you, when you think about it, uh, you realize that it's likely a scam. So, um, right now, there appears to be something from T-Mobile, where T-Mobile is the primary, um, uh, vehicle by which the scam people are sending it out, and uh, what they're trying to do is they're trying to get you to authorize, uh, a SIM swap for your phone. And then what's, what happens is they have, uh, your phone number assigned to their phone. And then from their phone, they're able to defeat the two-factor authentication that many, um, banks and, um, other services use, uh, to verify your identity, and that they can get control of your bank accounts, um, uh, and a bunch of other things that are very important to us. So, what I suggest is if you get a, a text message, uh, even something that looks, uh, legitimate, a lot of times, it's gonna show you the link they want you to click on. You'll see the address that it'll go to. Um, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm the type of person where if I see a, um, a phone number or a text that I don't recognize, I don't even deal with it at all. If someone knows me and they're trying to get in talk, contact with me, they'll call me and, you know, speak to me via voice. Um, if I see I have something from the post office, from the cellphone company, from the bank, I call those entities directly to find out, um, if it's legitimate or not. And that's something that I suggest you always do. Never ever in this digital age, click on a link that you don't know. Uh, because it's at the point where, um, they can take over your computer, they can take over your phone remotely. So, um, to protect yourself, the, the easiest thing you can do is not click on any unknown links. Um, a lot of times, they'll try to, um, fake you out by using something that looks like a legitimate address. But when you look at it, there's an additional punctuation in there. There might be a dash where there's not supposed to be one. It might be missing a letter in the middle of a long, um, address. Um, so the best thing to do is, um, call a legitimate source to find out what it's about, and just not click on any links. That's the tip for the month. Um, I'll open it up to any questions and concerns, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board online or in person?
Hang on.
Mr. Franklin?
LT, if you could tell me, I see that the Honolulu Police Department or the City Council took down your, uh, crime mapping, which shows us where the crimes are in our neighborhood and, you know, basically what occurred. So, I don't know why they would take that completely offline, uh, because then I would know about the robbery or the assault that occurred in our area. Uh, you know any reason for them dismantling the crime, the crime map completely?
Thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Franklin. Um, literally five minutes before this meeting, when I went to go, go on to crime mapping, I, I made the same discovery you did. So, I need to follow with my command to find out the reason why. Um, but I'll get back to you about that. Um, I think it's just a matter of they took the link off of the site, but you still should be able to go to crime mapping itself and put your, um, put in the, uh, zip code, and it should still pop up the same way that it was when we did have the link on the site. Uh, but I'll, I'll get, I'll get some verification for you about that.
Yeah, I, I tried all that. It didn't work. Uh, it just shows the random of the neighborhood. When it used to show, we could, like, the robbery and the sexual assault, we could understand where it occurred, what neighborhood is, if there's any threat to the neighborhood or the community. Uh, so I have to ask you, on the robbery, is the suspect in custody? And is the suspect on the sexual assault a known suspect to the victim, or he's still outstanding?
Um, for the robbery, I don't have that information right now. Um, for the sex assault law, um, the other, the first one was a sex first reported on East Street. And, um, because of, because of the level of the classification, it's classified. So, I'm not even allowed to look at it. Um, the other was a, a sex in the third on Kalaa Ivo Way. Um, and that one was withdrawn for, for whatever reason. So, that one is, there's no, there's no threat to the community. Um, it's not, it's not a, it's not something where somebody's just doing it at random. Um, but I will, I will try find out about the crime mapping, though. That's, that's very important, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll find out why it's on.
Thank you.
No problem, sir.
Any more questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you and have a good evening.
You have a good evening as well.
Thank you. Up next is Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda. She's not online or in person by any chance? Okay. Um, yeah, so, and we can also, uh, table her as well. Um, Spencer, he can, uh, let me know if any of them show up. Um, I'm on the, I'm on the virtual side as well of the meeting. But next on the agenda, we will move on to residents and community concerns. Are there any residents and community concerns at this time? Can you come up, um, in this area?
Yeah, right here.
Yes.
Any other concerns?
Well, I sit right here?
Uh, you can sit or, um, stand around where you're, yeah, it should capture.
Uh, my name is Travis Kalula Thompson, um, Kaliki Valley. This is my first time here at a board meeting. Thank you for hosting, and, uh, I just wanted to come and see, um, how it goes or what goes on down here. Because I was attacked by loose hunting dogs in my neighborhood on, uh, September twenty-ninth. So, I guess maybe I should have asked the lieutenant, how come that wasn't in the report? Um, and then when, you know, we, um, got pictures of the suspects screaming scene down Kaliki Street, we put that on socials and then got death threats from the hunters afterwards, which I don't know if that would have been in the report, but all of that was technically September twenty-ninth, September thirtieth.
Yes, Lieutenant.
Yeah.
And then we had kind of like a, a Kaliki Valley sort of neighborhood meeting over at my Chosan G, which is the temple back there. And my lived experience back there for seven years now has been super peaceful. Walked my dogs every day, never had to worry about anything I thought about. Uh, this is the first time I've ever, you know, been accosted in my neighborhood by anyone, really, you know, that I didn't live with. And then, um, so I was just kind of tripping out when I started hearing all of my neighbors who I've been living next to for seven years but haven't really ever hung out with about the long list of shenanigans that goes on back there. And particularly in the very last strip of Kaliki Street, past the bridge, over by Hualuaina. And I've known as a dog walker about a lot of illegal dumping that happens back there, 'cause that's self-evident. You can see it, you know? But I wasn't aware that, like, people are, are always trespassing whenever they go to ice ponds, for example, which is a very popular hyper there. And, uh, and then when I started to sort of look into it, I realized that the loose dogs that got us was like a whole bunch of things was wrong with that situation. One, it's illegal trespass. Why don't you go, like, on that road, past that fence? So then it's illegal hunting. It's not a legit, like, legal hunting place to be anyway. And then even if you're hunting, by the time you come to a residential neighborhood, you're supposed to leash your dogs so that not law got broke. And then if your dog's attacked someone, you're supposed to stick around, render aid, and, you know, just a car accident. Exchange information, and they didn't do that either, right? So, I don't know. I just wanted to come, kind of come by and see who, uh, try to put this on the record, I guess, and, um, try and see who's in charge of my neighborhood, or try to see who I can begin to hold accountable, these kind of things, 'cause I believe that, you know, the squeaky wheel, right? It's the grease. And I've never had anything to squeak about until, you know, I got bit in the neck, got bit in the arm, I got bit in the hand. Um, my dog, two thousand dollars worth of treatments to, you know, make her better. And just like her, I gotta get the warm compress to keep the swelling down on my neck bite, so. I don't know. It's just pain in the butt, and I never expected it, never saw it coming. And then when I talk to my neighbors, I find out there's a bunch of stuff going on. So I just wanted to see if anyone had anything to say about that, or if anyone had anything to add.
Okay, Madam Chair, uh, the fire department, but it's the, it's the, can you see if the lieutenant is still there?
Um, yeah, Spencer is Lieutenant Creighton.
Uh. Is he still online?
I don't see him online. Well, he was given a list. I, I was expecting to hear, one dangerous dog. You know what I mean?
One terroristic threat.
And then maybe one terroristic threatening, I thought of that.
You did not file a police report?
We did.
Oh, I did, yeah.
So you have a police report?
Yeah, yeah, two, four, dash, street five, six, seven.
That's why I was hoping the police was there, 'cause he.
Yeah, we have two police reports.
Call your police.
So, like, that was my split second to try and, like, say something to the cop.
What, what, uh, address?
My, my address or the, uh, address of the incident.
Um, the incident.
It was between thirty-six sixty and thirty-six seventy Kaliki Street. We're walking our dogs a few blocks from the house, like we always do.
Okay. Uh, yeah, you're mayor. Go ahead.
Hey, Travis, this is, um, my name is Simeon Rahat, and I'm, uh, I'm part of the, uh, Neighborhood Board Security Watch. And I was wondering if you would like to be one of the captain members in your street, you know, in the back of the valley. Um, I'll talk to you after you're interested.
Sure. How long do these things last?
It's all up to us. How we make change.
Yeah, she, she working at school, that's why. You know what I mean?
It's fine. But you can get your contacts, okay?
But I can get you contact before you leave.
For sure?
Yeah.
Or you get it now if you'd like, up to you.
Yeah, I mean, and that's something kind of that we've done in our own, like, uh, part of our neighborhood. We started a BOLO list where we just, you know, be on the lookout, suspicious truck. And then talking to our neighbors, we're able to find out that all these places that we thought were parking stalls that were being used by our neighbors are not. You know, they're just stalls. They're, they're like open spaces by the side of the street. And so we're trying to actively, like, close those spaces off so that outsiders don't think they can just park in our neighborhood and start walking through, you know?
So now you know where to start.
Yeah, you know, and actionable measures and stuff like that. I'm totally down for that.
And please come back, and, and all the time, 'cause that's how you, we get things done. We don't know what's going on in the community unless you come tell us.
Right.
And then we can talk to the police and the city council and people that, uh, come back. Plus, your representative will be coming up soon, too.
Oh, yeah. Boy, and I thought my guy, Kaike Hussey was gonna be here, but.
He's actually in San Francisco.
All right, yeah.
All right, but that's all I wanted to share.
Don't go anywhere.
Did you want to say anything before?
No, I, I just think that this is, um, in, you know, this issue is long vote, like, you know, it's been going on for a long time. Um, happened to us, but, you know, talking to the neighbors and people who have lived in this valley their whole lives, you know, um, it's just been an ongoing issue. Um, it starts kind of with the access to parking that, you know, in, you know, there's not that much parking back in, you know, in the back of the valley, but people will, like, makeshift spots for themselves and then kind of, you know, come through the neighborhood, um. You know, I mean, obviously, being on the street is not illegal, but going in the back of the valley, um, is, you know, there's, there's no hiking back there, there's no hunting back there. So, you know, people who are just kind of coming through the neighborhood, um, yeah, and then, uh, you know.
We, we beg people to come to our neighborhood, won't be, and also get other people to come and relay their, uh, situations and problems so we can, um, do resolutions, or we can talk to the city council person and then get all the help you need down there.
Yeah, put it on the record, you guys.
We, it's on the record.
Is that you, everyone you, everyone of you being here is exactly what Mr. Franklin wants? So I hope you guys are making his dreams come true. He wants more people to participate.
I want it to be packed, yeah.
Or online, online too.
Thank you, yes.
Oh, well, thank you for hearing me, you guys.
Thank you. Members, thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, so I'm gonna follow up on that. So my name is Debbie Isama Park, and I live deep in the valley to our neighbors. I live thirty-six, thirty-six thirty Kaliki Street. My family's been living in Kaliki since the nineteen fifties. Our house was built in nineteen sixty. And so, um, totally rooted in the valley, and my neighbors are Hualuaina, and they do a lot of stuff, um, with them as well. Um, so part of our little meeting that we had that, at the Chosan G was to just get the neighborhood together, because we've never really had a, uh, what do we say, a Neighborhood Watch. We always kind of looked out for each other, because a lot of the people that live in the back are Kupuna, and they've been there forever. So for us, it's our, you know, it's my, my dad, my grandfather, my grandma. So, the hunting's been going on forever, and that's just, you know, something that we, 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 I've lived with since I was little. I knew there was hunters. I knew how to, how to, uh, you know, I knew them. Um, but then it's gotten a little crazy, because the hunting has become, uh, social media lifestyle. I don't know how to put it. It's changed.
Right.
And so that's what we need to know. We're dealing with a different kind of hunter. It's not the same hunters that we had before.
Right.
These guys are younger, and they pack a weapon, and they are vigilante kind of sort. They're like running game hunters. They're not the same. They, they, they don't stop to render aid. They come and see the dogs bit people, and they just pick up their stuff and keep walking. Even though you're addressing them, they just ignore you or give you the finger, you know? So, the, the, it's the attitude of the, of the new generation of hunters that we need to address. And I think it's all young, young, young kids that have money, um, that have, you know, all the, all the dogs have tracking devices. They are high-tech. They know how to do it. But the thing about it that we don't like is that on social media, they're, they're flipping the signs and they're totally disregarding, they're mooning, they're putting everything on Instagram, and yet we're not doing anything about it. So that's the thing, you know, it's like, we need to really catch, catch up with that. Are we gonna, are we going to be normalized it by allowing it to happen and just ignore? Or are we gonna start to do something about it? But we don't know what to do.
If the police enforce it.
Yeah, yeah, we're, I mean, and that's the thing. A lot of our people that live in the back, and I can speak for many, they don't want to even call the police anymore because they get no action. I mean, I'm serious. They said, "I'm tired already." I don't like calling HPD. I keep calling HPD about the, the tin roof, and, and finally, the, the police is telling him, you know what? Let me call you now. But he's, uh, he has trespassers coming in, making lots of noise, partying, drinking at the ice, at the tin roof. You guys know where Tin Roof is, right? So over there, and they live in the back. And, uh, they're trying to sleep, and they can't, 'cause everybody's partying. So it, it's a whole thing. It's cat and mouse game that we keep playing. And the thing about the trespassing thing, there's so many property owners in the back of the valley. It's not just Board of Water, B L N R. It's private owners. So when you get to the ice ponds, 'cause I've been working this for ten years. So all these individual owners, how are we gonna address all of them to put up private property? You know, there's about five or ten, five to ten different owners as you go up to the ice pond. And it's, it's kind of, it's kind of pointless for us a lot of times to try and, 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 you know, initiate trespassing things when there's so much other people involved. So, in our case, in, in the valley, you know, you guys love the, that, people love Kaliki Valley so much. They say, "So beautiful." And we want to maintain it, and we want to keep it that way. But we need your help. You know, we do need your help. So, yeah, thank you so much. And, yeah, so, yeah.
Say something. So, eventually, it's good that you came. It's gonna start from the folks. And then I think it's gonna be the, uh, B L N R, uh, enforcement that's gonna be involved, 'cause when you, you know, like, especially with the area that you're talking about.
Yeah.
I think, um, that's off the jurisdiction of the HPD.
Yeah.
So, I think we can work towards that.
Another thing we have to do is we have to document everything, like, we're documenting now a, uh, a, uh, what's that, sober house living. We want to document all the complaints. We also have to document all the complaints that's going on back there. So we can take all those complaints and pile them together, and then we can attack, uh, or show them to HPD and, and ask for the service based upon all the, the, the reports that's generated, all the manpower generated. So we can, uh, uh, stop this happening, but you have to make reports. All the time, you have to make tons of them, so we can use those reports at the board when we talk to the city council person, the mayor, or we talk to HPD, showing that you're doing your job. We're trying to do our job, and they need to do their job. So we have to keep tracking things. So, please, make all the reports, video record them, uh, on your cellphones. Put up any type of camera you can, like a Ring camera, to record them coming in and out, and bring all that stuff to us, and we can show it to the police, 'cause that's evidence. If they flip you off or moon you, we want that on, on tape. So it's as simple as getting a Ring camera and just let them walk on and violate the signs and just record them, which doesn't put you in harm's way. You record them from anywhere on your phone. And anything they say and do, we can use that for the police. And we suggest generate one thousand reports that we have to, until we get done.
Am I extending to you correctly, that they actually are posting these videos of them breaking?
That's what I heard, on Instagram.
Oh, my God.
And that was a, see, that was a thing even when I was working with, uh, I was working with Kukunada with the ice pond thing during COVID. Like, I was the one documenting every car, every person that walked up, and we had a whole report of all the trespassers going up the ice pond. And we're able to, um, do some things to deter that, you know, we're able to deter that. But we couldn't, we can't one-hundred percent clean, clean housing and, and do that. But the, the, the things about social media is that we can, um, we, what we found out, that we really can't, there wasn't a law at that time to say, like, "Oh, you're breaking the law. You're posting these things of your illegal hiking," right? But there's nothing we can, we could do to get these people at that time.
Police couldn't do anything with those videos? That's more damning than even the video, right? They're admitting to it, right?
No, there was nothing. They said, "We can't do anything yet." Because even the illegal hikes, even hiking, uh, what do you call, websites would put how, how to get around the police, how to get around the police at Kaliki Valley. It would tell them when the police was there, what time the police. So don't go between nine AM and four PM, 'cause that's when the police is there. And this is these legitimate hiking trail sites, and they're telling people how to break the law. So I, it's cuckoo. I don't get it, you know? But there wasn't any, anything that we could do as a state to go after these people that are doing these postings. You know, and so we get people come up and say, "Well, my friend went out last week." I just saw pictures on, on YouTube of somebody doing a whole tour, of, doing these illegal things. So they think it's fine.
But they don't think that they get caught, so we're gonna work with you, and we're gonna get them caught?
Yeah.
And then let's find them. Let's see how many is.
Yes.
All right.
Oh, Mr. Kalaka.
In regards to, uh, pig hunters.
Yes.
Uh, they, they got a group of, uh, pig hunters, Hawaii Pig Hunters Association.
Yeah.
They, uh, they're pretty, uh, responsible, well, majority of responsible hunters. And, uh, we should contact them and find out how they. They're probably not members of the association, but, you know, this reflects on the pig hunting, uh, group. So they might be able to have some kind of input on, uh, how they address this in other parts of the island.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
We can, uh, contact them, see what they get to say.
Yeah.
And, uh, get back to you guys and what they recommend you guys do.
Well, we, I'd be, we, just to, you know, um, tip lines or whatever, internet's smooth. Friends and family, phone calls, especially after the death threat. Able to identify, potentially identify some of these folks. And then I guess a backstory I heard was that they kind of got ran out of their own neighborhood by the hunters from doing exactly this kind of stuff. Kani'ohi, where they're from. And so now they can't even hunt in their own backyard anymore. So they, oh, in ours, doing any kind of.
Coming in ours, yeah.
We can post their pictures online, too. Post them up as well.
So what we, we got going on right now is the, the old-timer hunters that have been doing it for decades, like fifty years. They're working closely with Hualuaina. They have an agreement with them. And it's part of their eradication of keeping the pigs so that they don't eat their farmland and stuff. So they, we already have a group of hunters that we've been, we've been, uh, working with, and we have a relationship with that are great hunters. They.
You know they're part of the Hawaii Pig Hunters Association?
I don't know. The one that, the Hawaii Pig Hunter, the one is one of our other neighbors, um, who wasn't at that meeting on Sunday. But he's part of the Hawaii Pig Hunters Association.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try and contact them, and then they might be the same organization you guys working with already. But they monitor pig hunting, uh, leg- illegal activities. And if this guy's doing illegal stuff, we reflect on all pig hunters. And I think they're gonna, uh, put some pressure on these guys to behave or move out, you know?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, Madam Chair, did you want the fire department to go first?
Okay, I'm here. So, um, since the fire department is here, um, if you'd like to come up, um.
Where would you like me?
Actually.
Uh, right, right there, right next to the.
Right next to the.
Sorry, I'm so late, but, uh, we had a fire. Ready? Oh.
Yeah, oh, no, no, um, early here, sorry. I just was wondering why.
Uh, just some stats from last month. Uh, we had one nuisance fire, fifty-seven medicals, and three motor vehicle collisions. And then our fire safety tip for the month is smoke alarms. Make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. For more information and resources, visit FPW.org. And then you can install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, like a hallway, and on each level of the home. You should test your smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button and replace all smoke alarms when they are ten years old, or stop responding when tested. And that is it.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And then we can, um, I'm actually going back now to residents and community concerns, just to see if there are any more residents and community concerns.
We're gonna talk about the Hilton Hawaiian Village. Um, a lot of you probably have heard and know, uh, in the, you know, through the Kaliki Valley community, um, because we've got eighteen hundred workers, um, that are right now out on strike. We've tried, uh, for months to negotiate a fair contract, but, you know, the Hilton is no longer owned by a family anymore, and so owned by Park Hotel and Resorts, uh, which answer to a board of shareholders. Um, so, you know, it's not hard being out there. I mean, it's very hard being out there on the picket line, um, you know, marching in hot sun, chanting, dancing, and, you know, walking in circles to try and get the attention of our guests, um, to be more or less in solidarity with us. Uh, we managed to stop quite a few different conventions from coming through, um, our, and crossing our picket line. And we do ask that the community of Kaliki, Kaliki Valley and its members, um, you know, maybe choose not to vacation at the Hilton Hawaiian Village. Um, you know, don't, um, have your parties there, um, graduations, you know, I mean, weddings, whatever it is. Um, the working conditions and, and the reason we are fighting is a lot of it has to do with the staffing that we. Um the working conditions and and the reason we are fighting is a lot of it has to do with the staffing that we um noticed after COVID. Um a lot of these companies have cut staff, which you know, in so many different jobs, you will notice that. Um but our workload has not decreased, it's increased. Our percentage of occupancy is still way up there in the hundred, you know, hundred or or just a little bit less. So it's everyone that's doing this increased workload and sometimes our environment is not safe. Uh we have numerous meetings scheduled with management to do uh simple fixes like bathroom sinks, bathroom toilets, um potholes. And these are things we've noticed in five years that have not been done. Uh we have asked them, uh you know, guests complain on numerous occasions and we're constantly um making up stories or or lying for the company and saying, oh, there's a pothole, oh my, I'll go ahead and report that. Well, we know it's been sitting there like that for five years. They're just not, you know, taking it upon themselves uh to notice it, nor notice us as employees and valuing us. Um so basically, you know, we're we're fighting for a liv- livable wage. We're, you know, better working conditions, we're overworked, understaffed, and we are definitely under-valued.
Hi, um thank you for this opportunity. Um I'm, I'm a housekeeper at the Hilton Hawaiian Village for seven years. So we're here uh striking at the at the Hilton, cause we are fighting for our contract. We're fighting for our contract now, cause uh since uh we do the first strike, the three days, uh you don't listen. So after the three days, we go back to work, still not listening. We go for more negotiations, but still they don't listen to what we are fighting for. So we're here of fighting for our wages as well. Cause living here in Hawaii for now is so expensive, especially in this state. So for me, as a single mom, I need to work for two or three jobs to survive my family. Cause paying my rent, eighteen hundred bucks, my one check will go to the rest. The other rest is for the food and expenses for for the village. So uh this company, they didn't listen to us. It's only little bit, we are asking like twelve dollars, but they don't. Now that we're on strike, they're calling for the scabs to pay thirty-three bucks. And then what's the feeling for us working at that big company? They don't even give us that we are asking for. And also we're here for like the work staffing. Cause as housekeeper, we must do all training only, not doing job for here and there. Now they cut people so that they will have more like this. So we're here uh to uh express what's happening in the village right now. Cause for me, for for the first day until this sixteenth day, not including the three days that we've been striking before, I'm the first chanteers on the village. Luckily, I will not lose my voice. I still got until this time, yeah. So um what else I'm gonna say, um um uh sorry, I forgot already. So uh I think uh that's all. Hopefully you guys will support what we're going through right now. Cause walking down on the village uh at ten o'clock, it's so hot. Yeah, all the, all the, what's that called? The hardship for uh encouraging your coworkers, the team members, to stand on the picket line, it's hard. Yeah, yeah, cause everyone is different. Some is supportive, some no. Yeah, but for me, I gotta stand for my coworkers, team members, yeah. And I, we keep fighting for, hopefully soon we get our contracts. That's about all I say, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the starting pay for a housekeeper at the Hilton, you know?
Oh, um I don't uh, I don't know the specific uh rate for now for the new hire, sir. But the first, I hired Hilton Hawaiian Village was uh eighteen fifty, eighteen fifty, I think so. But it passed for like eight years ago, sir. I think uh for this time, the new hire will be like twenty-two if I'm not mistaken.
So they've, they've hired a lot at thirty-three, but they're listing them as part-time, so they they don't have to pay their medical. So what it is, is there's all these positions across the board that is just a flat thirty-three dollars for anybody. Whether you're sweeping out the yard, you know, around the surroundings.
That's the scab.
That's the scab that's being hired to work our jobs.
Yeah, yes, sir.
You guys replaced, temporary replacement.
Right, right, correct.
But for now, our rate for the timeshare is uh twenty fifty. The regular sale is uh twenty eight, twenty nine. I'm aside for the timeshare side. But you know, all we want the the good service for the guests as well. So we need the respect for the workers, that way we can provide the good service to our guests. That's the main thing.
Minister, largest Hilton in the, in the US.
Right.
And it's also the busiest hotel in the US.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It is easy. It's a hundred percent, you listen, the percentage goes to ninety-five like that, so a lot of money.
I think when you look at the statistics of Waikiki in general, when they talk about occupancy per um month. Um the Hilton Hawaiian Village, I mean, though of course they participate with the grand total, they're sort of on their own. I mean, it could be a hundred percent, but everyone else is at seventy. You know, and that happens consistently, month after month, because we're a convention hotel. We can hold, you know, a couple of conventions at the same time.
Yeah, and we know that, you know, the Hilton Hawaiian Village, just that one hotel alone is making uh over a hundred eighty-eight million dollars in profit uh per year out of, you know, maybe five hundred million dollars in revenue or four or something. And a hundred eighty-eight million in profit in last year. So that's like almost a forty percent, forty cents on the dollar that they're, they wanna put in their pockets. Very profitable.
Yeah.
Thank you for being there.
Thank you for the questions.
You want to hear?
I miss you.
When you start part, uh the owners are part of the hotels.
Go tell them your story. Yes.
Keep, keep away details.
So, so what it is, it's um, you you could probably explain that. Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, so um, you know, uh for a while, I think from two thousand seven to twenty thirteen, uh the Hilton Wine Village and and all of Hilton was owned by a private equity firm called Blackstone. Uh they kind of sold it off in chunks. Uh but uh then it was just owned by Hilton Corporation and then Hilton Corporation split into three different companies. Uh so Hilton is the management company, Hilton Worldwide, and they manage the hotel. Then there's Hilton Grand Vacations, which uses the Hilton name, but it's actually a different company, that's the timeshares. And then there's Park Hotels, which they don't manage, they just own the property. And they own like forty-three different Hiltons. But uh for Park Hotels, this is, this one Hilton is like twenty-seven percent of their total uh profit for the whole company. This one property, so.
So that's divided under forty-something different properties. They, this one property is twenty-something percent of their, their bread and butter.
Yeah.
So they rely on it heavily.
Yeah, and that's true of a lot of hotels, a lot of them are not owned by the same company that runs them anymore. Um a lot of the owners of hotels are these big real estate companies now. And they kind of, they look at the hotels as real estate assets, you know, they buy and sell and that's kind of their uh that's kind of their business. But what gets lost is the the aloha and the and the the workers and, you know, thinking about the future of the property.
Hawaiian hospitality is lost. Or they're piggybacking on our hospitality. We provide the service and the, you know, the uh revenue. So different, you know, I remember just walking, I I've been there for eighteen years, just walking on property. You knew what holiday it was. They were so decked out, there were so many activities, it was so lively. Now you're lucky to get a a buffet during Christmas, New Year's, Thanksgiving and Mother's Day, and that's it. There's no decorations. They've taken that down. They don't celebrate anything, you know, not even the Olympics. People used to look forward to being able to collect even the the room key card, something as simple as that. You know, Olympic cards with Michael Phelps on it or any Olympic, they don't do anything. They cut corners, absolute standard, basic, with no exceptions of grandeur of any type.
So you liked it when it was a REIT?
I loved it when it was um Hilton.
Cause Blackstone is a REIT.
Blackstone is a private equity, the REIT is what owns it now.
Well.
Yeah. They, they, they were, they managed REIT portfolios.
Yeah.
Kind, kind of, kind of like the, what um uh BlackRock has been doing.
Yes, correct.
Buying all these properties, they're turning them into REITs, real estate investment trust. So it was owned by a REIT and um.
It is owned by a REIT.
Yeah, so is it still owned by a REIT?
Correct, Park Hotel and Resort is a REIT, yes. Yeah, so we're one of the forty-six properties. They cherry picked the best ones, so they've got Hilton Hawaiian Village, Waikoloa. Um you know, we just settled our contract with the uh Bayfront in San Diego that has been out on strike for thirty-eight days. Today was the day they negotiated and they finalized that. And we've got over five thousand workers spread throughout the United States with our unite here that are part of Hilton or Sheraton or.
Those are just being recorded.
Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna say what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Give me a call and I'll throw something in for your location. But I can, I can share on the record.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So um I did want to ask um everyone else uh in the community if there are any other um, any more residents and community concerns at this time? Did you have, or?
The Oxford House, um I'm trying to update what was going on with the cleaning sober house.
I think Happy is online, if anything, we can see if she has any updates or.
I think he's updating us, cause he's keeping track for us.
Oh, yeah, do you have an update? Sorry.
Uh Marvin Ashiro, uh BY Street, next to the Oxford House, cleaning sober house. Um Ilani, uh Cummings, call me this afternoon, give me an, an update on the happening of what's going on. The um, the project is going forward with the um, you know, what they're trying to do, um tobacco and drug management is going forward with the investigation of of this property, of this house going on. And then um she called me this afternoon, so I just got the message this afternoon. So I was trying to update everybody with this um for this situation. It's going forward with the investigation and I'm so happy for them.
Good? So everyone knows, we asked our resident last week to keep track of what's going on in the cleaning sober house violations.
Yeah.
Right. And they'll keep track of them, make crime reports, because what we wanna do is not have them just stick every cleaning sober house in Kaliki Valley. We wanna keep track of them and therefore the next time they wanna stick a cleaning sober here, we will use this as our test case for going against another cleaning sober in Kaliki Valley. So he's tracking it for, now we have someone that's gonna come and talk about that. And because of that, last month, the investigation has started. That's what we want you to do and we want you to keep going, so we can always track what's in Kaliki Valley. Thank you for.
Thank you, thank you, Marvin.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. You're welcome. Thank you. I got one last thing for, after all the residents have done, I got one community concern.
Okay, is, I was checking with the resident one last night, if there's any more community uh concerns? And if not, then um Mr. Franklin.
Yes, last week I went to uh what is called Safe Rouse from School. Because it's what it says, Safe Rouse from School. So I was told ago, because around our schools, our crosswalks are not painted. They let the kids walk across the street to get into school property. And we have two uh, two school signs on Kaliki that are broken. And they wanna lower the speed for these speed signs and put speed bumps up. But it'd be nice to get the thirty-year-old signs repaired with update one, so you'll know if you're going thirty miles an hour. Go in there instead of taking school bumps in there. So it was called the Kaliki, I I got some down there, it was called the Kaliki Safe Rouse from School. But when I went to the meeting, it was all about Kalii Palama. Everything that's being done is there. So I asked them, what about Kalii Valley? There's zero going on in Kalii Valley. So I said, well, maybe they're gonna do something in the future with Kalii Valley. That's the big zero too. So then I asked them about the micro grants that every school can get that help improve the schools, so the Safe Rouse from School. And I was told that they're not funded, but they're sitting on ten million dollars of federal money in their bank account. So I don't understand why they're not funded for mini grants at all. So I, the lady that was sitting there, cause you think they'd be like here, here and there. So I asked her that first and then I got this piece of paper basically saying, shut up and just write it down. If you wanna talk to the people that's standing in front of us. So uh I asked her, because it's transportation, what about painting the crosswalks? Cause she's fond of Safe Rouse from School. And she told me that was not her apartment. That I have to go do the transportation people to have the crosswalks that the cakies cross to get on school property painted. And I didn't understand this, because you're Safe Rouse from School with ten million dollars. Why can't we get our crosswalks painted that that kids cross to get in the school? And it's just not Kalii Valley. My son goes to Roosevelt, their crosswalks, Stevenson Crosswalks, any school that you go to, if you watch the children cross the school, they're crossing it in unpainted crosswalks. So how are we sitting on ten million dollars and we wanna do all this nifty stuff that they keep talking about? But we won't paint crosswalks that children got across to get into school. So uh I didn't understand this concept. Uh I brought it to Kalii Valley today because we have nothing going on in Kalii Valley. It's not even new for Kalii Valley. There are no projects in Kalii Valley, there is no school that I was told that is registered in South, the Safe uh Rouse from School. That I think is, that's unbelievable. So we're gonna keep working on trying to get our crosswalks painted in Kalii Valley. Try to get our, our school signs for the kids to say to them, tell you where you're going in Kalii Valley. So I just want to bring that to the community, these are our community concerns. And hopefully we'll get something done for Kalii Valley. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
You know, uh Safe Rouse from School, is that the same thing as the walking school bus?
It isn't, I think it's the same program, but the program is Safe Rouse from School. And I did a research on it, I looked at their website, they haven't given out a grant since two thousand eighteen, sitting on ten million dollars. And they're proposing proposals and that's fine for all these other communities. If you look at this paper here, it shows you all the communities that they have given money to and worked on. If you'll see none of our Kalii Valley, zero, we get zero. So that's why I went to that meeting, cause I thought it was about, it says Kalii, but they mean Kalii Palama. They don't mean Kalii Valley. And that's the big distinction in everybody mind between those two. So uh I gave the board a copy of it. Hopefully, we're gonna work on projects from Safe Rouse to School to get something in Kalii Valley, get mini grants, get our crosswalks painted on all our schools and hopefully add a trickle out to every school that the children got across to get to schools without someone being killed like at McKinley before they paint crosswalks. So, Madam Chair, you're back.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
You're welcome.
Is it different from the complete streets thing?
I, I think it's different, but they call themselves Safe Rouse from School. It might be one of the programs inside of Safe Rouse from School. I did a deep dive on their website, which is like two thousand seventeen, but it states that all this stuff is being done. But what we should know, it's federal money, you're supposed to hand it out, or you're not supposed to get anymore. Not sit on ten million dollars, not help us. You're welcome.
And I believe, yeah, if there are no more um community, um if there are no more um.
What, transportation?
Oh, oh, did you wanna bring up now or did you wanna wait till the transportation community? No.
Oh, wait.
It's true, Safe Rouse from School is part of transportation. It's true, Safe Route from School is part of transportation.
That's true, I up to you though, if you wanted to uh like say it now or during the transportation committee?
I'll wait.
As a member, you'll wait, okay, okay, no problem, thank you. Oh, did Chester have his hand up? No, it's it's just a screen, I don't see a hand, no, you're good, sorry.
Oh, I see Chester's hand.
Oh, he has a hand, okay, okay, sorry. Chester?
Hi, I I just wanted to um report to uh Randy that uh, you know, that very program that you referred to uh Lynn Robinson now reported that I had at our last meeting. So I I don't know if you were at the meeting or not, but anyway, she did report that Safe Route to School program. Anyway, the city has one and the state has one, but anyway, I was looking into the city's program. Because um you may or may not remember, the Department of Transportation is gonna put back that crosswalk uh across from the park. So that's going to happen. I I think Lynn reported that they selected, they consulted, and they're gonna figure out how to paint lines across on the streets. So anyway, that should be coming. But uh there were other other problems that uh she reported on, and I also reported to her, so um hopefully, we'll we'll see some results sooner than later.
Lynn sent me, Lynn sent me to the Safe Route from School meeting. So I was there last month, but she sent me to this meeting, I went to this meeting per her request. And that's why I found out that they got nothing going on. But my basically from Safe Route to School, my whole problem is, around our schools, we should have painted crosswalks. I mean, how hard is that? Paint the crosswalks that the kids gotta walk across to get to the school? That's my whole thing, and fix our signs. Oh my god, they've been, they're thirty-year-old, they've been busted, we've been trying for two years, this committee, to get them, the infrastructure is already there. You don't have to do nothing, but take the old one out, put the new one in. But Lynn sent me there, so that's why I went to the meeting.
Um Chair, this is Lynn. Aloha Chair, aloha community members, Lynn's um here for council member Tyler Dos Santos Tam. Um Board Member Franklin, I am sorry that um I I personally couldn't be at that meeting, and um I didn't want you to feel like I sent you there, I just knew it was of interest to you. Um and I certainly did not understand that it would um only be Kalihie Palama centric. So um I have I have a couple of things. So you know, we we share your frustration about the school signs. If they're not gonna work, they shouldn't be there, if they can't fix them, we just are not getting answers. That is the Department of Transportation. And um that, you know, that's that's who needs to make that evaluation. And um that's who that that request got referred to. As far as the crosswalks, um the crosswalks are repainted by the Department of Facility Maintenance. And um we have, you know, I'd, we just need to discuss, I just need a list of crosswalks. I can put in those requests, and usually, within two to three months, all of the crosswalks that we request um you know, get repainted. So they're very receptive, they're they're, you know, with the resources that they have, they they get to them. I have not found that kind of, you know, um we, you know, frustration with getting crosswalks repainted. I don't think, so that would fall under anyhow, the Department of Facility Maintenance, not that that's important for anybody else to know. But any crosswalks that need repainting that are in our district, please, please let me know, I will immediately put in a request. And um and we will do what we can to get them repainted. Um I wanna, I'm gonna, I will follow up personally with the city side of the Safe Routes to School and start a conversation with them. Um just to see, first, I I've done the research too, just through the website. But I, just to see what that program offers and how it's like, how we can access those resources, right? So for Kalihie Valley specifically, um um in my head, I can't make any promises, but maybe it would be a nice idea to get a representative from that program to um get on your agenda and approach your your um board. Um that, you know, that meeting was led by um a couple of different elected officials. And I I honestly, I'm surprised to hear that it wasn't just general information, that it was um, you know, so specific to um, you know, Kalihie Palama. So I apologize if you felt like you wasted your time, or not being respected in that meeting. Um I'm very sad to hear that. Um but I will absolutely work with all of you to um find out more about how we can pull resources for Safe Routes to School. Where that, how to access that funding, and how it could benefit the district.
Thank you.
I think Chester, is your hand still up? Um do you have something to say?
Uh yeah, I wanna respectfully disagree with Lynn. Remember, at our last meeting, Lynn, we also talked about the the crosswalk at uh was at No Breakup. And you re- and you reported that from the GFM, the referral was made to DTS or Department of Transportation, and uh you know, same thing, we're we're kind of playing a little volleyball here, the ball is going back and forth.
So um I I honor your respectful disagreement of Board Member Koga. So that would have gone to the Department of, that's not just repainting, so it's not just maintenance. So the the review and determination about whether to move that or put in that uh crosswalk again did get referred to the Department of Transportation Services. They made that determination. But to get uh to get um usually, to get a sign replaced, repaired, to get so um you know, other infrastructure and crosswalks, or any um any roadlines repainted, that gets referred to the Department of Facility Maintenance. Does that make sense to you? It's confusing, and I I'm here to make you guys less confused, so um I apologize.
Thank you so much Lynn.
We can move on.
Yes, we can definitely move on. Um so the next part of our agenda is actually presentation from Adult Friends for Youth. Uh I believe Lisa is online to present virtually. Um is there for her to share her presentation by her chance?
She should be able to share.
Okay, okay, she should be able to share. Yeah, Lisa Tomashiro, I believe.
Uh, can you folks hear me?
Oh.
Really?
It's a little quiet on our end, we're boosting, uh putting up the volume. Uh you can test again, oh, we can hear you now.
Testing, testing, okay. Um I'm so sorry, I wasn't aware that we were supposed to have a like a presentation, so I don't really have um like any slides per se. Uh I'll just be here to share about um our program. So uh thank you all for having me tonight. Uh my name is Lisa Tomashiro with Adult Friends for Youth, I'm the Director of Operations and Special Programs. Adult Friends for Youth has been uh in operation for thirty-eight years now. And our mission really is to redirect uh the lives of our youth to stop violence and create peaceful uh communities and schools. As I've heard a lot of um these topics kind of come up tonight amongst uh all of you residents. And uh some of the concerns, right, in terms of safety and and so forth. And and just having peace within your own homes and your neighborhood. So our goal, we, what we do, we do have four main programs. Our biggest program is our redirectional therapy counseling groups. That is conducted primarily on campus, uh in schools that we do have contracts with. And it is to serve um to do weekly counseling. It's really to talk about some of the issues that the young people are going through. You know, um a lot of the youth that we serve often come from public housing, um maybe some, you know, broken families, broken homes. And so really diving deep into the issues that surround them. And how do we start building safer schools and safer communities for everyone to thrive? Uh and so that's a big component that, you know, would primarily be a part of um Kalihie Valley. We do also have a conducted annual Pearl Convention, which is Peace, Empathy, Acceptance, Respect, and Love. Those are the acronyms. It is an anti-bullying and violence convention held for elementary and middle school youth. Once a year, it's a week-long program, uh because of COVID, we were able to shift kind of a hybrid version. Um so those are just some of the programs that we are operating on. Um I know that when uh Chair uh Leila kind of reached out, it was about how maybe there may be some alignment um or some partnerships uh with uh our our youth, or just, you know, in general with our programs. We do serve Farrington High School. We don't have any like, you know, middle schools in the Kalihie area, but we do have a lot of uh schools in the Kalihie District that do attend the Pearl. I'm not too sure if Kalihie Uka has been coming. But um yeah, I think that's kind of the things that we do. We do have, uh we do serve youth in Kalihie, uh Camp Four Housing, um and so forth. And we will be doing, uh we have been for the past couple of, this is gonna be our fourth year. Um we have like, just because we realize the dangers if there's so many you- youth, potentially even unaccompanied youth, right? Out in the neighborhood, or if they're heading down towards Waikiki. So we do partner with HPD where um we're kind of canvassing uh Waikiki to kind of minimize some of the youth interactions that may happen. Uh but at the same time, we are working closely with our youth uh at Camp Four. And they do like these like really simple kind of tabletop carnival-type games so that they can keep the kids uh in their community safe as well. And you know, we pass out candy, they pass out candy, and it's really um youth-led. And so, yeah, those are just some of the things that we are doing. Um I just wanted to maybe throw it out to you folks, if you folks have more questions about the program, or you know, um and so forth.
Are there any questions from the board online or in person for Adult Friends for Youth? Oh, seeing, oh, Mr. Rojas, you have one?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Rojas has one actually.
Could could you give us like, you know, like a good detail or some kind of incident that kind of improved your part of being in Camp Four Housing? Or any any of any of these other areas?
So sorry if you heard, if I heard correctly, you're asking like how, like what parts do we play to improve some of the incidents that are occurring?
Yeah. Did you tell us?
Yeah, I mean.
Details or some stories, like, let's dive into it.
Yeah, we we understand that, you know, there is a lot of increase in in the violence, especially um uh youth violence, right? And then I did hear another resident talking about they they carry weapons now, it 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 comes out a lot faster. Uh and and you know, I think someone really hit it on the nose where it was, it, social media plays a big part. And that is something we are also struggling with, that is a shift we are making, where our program did not have to address that. Um you know, like ten years ago, that is something that now we are really needing to put in the forefront of what are things youth looking at on social media, and how do you start changing those feeds into more positive things, right? And that's like a media literacy. But in the kind of the bigger scale, we we do um try to do our best to work behind the scenes when there are incidents that um we know that may involve our youth. And so we oftentimes, if there is um rivalries or things that are occurring between different maybe public housings or different groups, we work very hard to mediate. So um we will talk with both sides to see if there is an opportunity for mediation. Um we bring, usually, we'll bring a couple leaders, and then we'll sit down um in a neutral turf, a neutral space for them to talk about the differences and how can they uh kind of come to an agreement. And what we really try to work on is seeing the school as kind of like that safe zone. Um so that all the kids have the opportunity to learn, right? Not being afraid that if I come and my friends are not there, then I'm afraid I'm gonna be attacked by the other side. So we really try to work hard to have them keep peace on campus. Um so we often do those types of work. But in general, like we really, over the thirty-eight years, our our work is conducted on the group level because we understand that, you know, I'm just throwing out a name, right? Like um Johnny, if he is being known to kind of be causing havoc in his community, he is often uh not alone. And so we ask him, and we will outreach to him to be like, well, bring all your friends. Let's work with all of you, so we all move in a positive direction. Because we know they can influence each other, themselves negatively, and we've seen it. But we know they also have the power and the knowledge um to to influence each other positively if they're given the right support, the skills, and the resources. Um and so those are, you know, and it takes time, and I know that some of you folks are really kind of addressing some immediate um concerns that need to be addressed rather quickly. And you know, I I can't, we can't share that we have the magic solution or the silver bullet, right? That's gonna um solve all of these youth problems. But we typically work with the youth three to four years. Because we know that change is long-term, and we wanna see them break these kind of um destructive cycles so that as they enter or graduate from high school, um they are becoming constructive, contributing members of our society.
Good, so um what what?
Mistress, yeah.
So, okay, one last, one last one before I go.
One last question.
Um I was I was gonna say, for, what would you advise for the whole community to help you?
Or how the community, or even the board can help.
Yeah, the board, the the community around us, the people, so that we can help you. And in that way, we want, we would like to know as well, who supports you? I mean, we know that you're like Adult Friends for Youth, but who's your support, and then what can we do as a community to support you?
Um so who, like who our supporters are in general, um that's a great question. I do believe that we do have uh various, you know, uh legislators we uh that work with, especially I do see um Senator Kim, um and Representative Mizuno have, has always been uh supportive. Not sure who else is in Kalihie Valley, I'm so sorry, of of all the legislators. But we do, you know, we really try to, we do have like support in that sense. Some of the schools, of course, our relationship is very strong with Farrington. But we don't, um we're not unfortunately on the middle school campuses uh for various reasons. But if that answers your question. And then I think, you know, like just being aware of maybe if, where are these kids coming from? Like I I think some of you have said, some of them don't even live in Kalihie, there may be trespassing. Um but if they do live in Kalihie and um you're noticing them frequently, then you know, please kind of let us know, so that way we can see how. kind of let us know so that way we can see how we can outreach to some of the kids. Because we all know, like, they are all, all on social media and all of the kids kind of, just they're all connected, right? To some level and, um, yeah, we, we may not be able to pick up an entire new group at this point, but it's something to always keep in mind, like what is really happening in, in Kalih. Our, our work has been in Kalih for a very long time.
And then Mr. Cool, I have one question.
Lisa, you know, last month, uh, we invited a administrator overseeing the operations at Kalih Valley Homes, and he called it Camp Fort Housing. Uh, and one of the questions that we had, we asked him was what type of programs do they have for the youth in Kalih Valley Homes? They're not outside, you know, at Farrington, but specifically on the premises of Kalih Valley Homes. And uh he wasn't sure, but uh your, or your organization's name was brought up. So I was wondering if you know specifically what type of uh activities are offered to the young uh residents of Kalih Valley Homes?
Great question. I mean, uh, we are, you know, just to let, you know, we are not like stationed at all in Kalih Valley. Our office is actually by the airport because we wanna remain as neutral as possible. Um, in the, and so, but we are often in like Kalih, right? So you'll see our big fifteen passenger vans with Adult Friends for Youth uh driving around. Uh, as far as activities, that is something we are also trying to um address because we, we do see the, the need. They do not have a playground, right, for the kids. Um, they don't have like any type of rec center. Um, but that is something we have been working with our youth and uh Senator Kidani and Senator Kim into um the demolition of it because their rec center slash basketball gym has been condemned for such a long time. Um, and, and so we're really, yeah, so to answer straightforwardly your questions, I, we don't know any activities that are linked directly with, you know, from the association or the kids. I believe it'd probably be outside again, um, organizations trying to do things for the kids in the housing. And that, that's something our youth constantly bring up to us. And so we're working with them on how do we start that, you know, how do we make these things happen?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And then just ask if there are any other questions from the board or?
Thank you.
Um.
Mr. You.
Yeah, you can, you can sit there.
My name is Dana Yapen. I'm a substitute teacher at Farrington. And could you tell me, when I sign a kid out to go to Adult Friends for Youth, what do they actually do? Because we sign kids out to go to, to meet you guys, but I don't know. Maybe this would be education for all of us of what they're going through and what are they doing when they get signed out from class?
Sure, absolutely. So we conduct weekly sessions on campus. Um, we do have a curriculum that addresses, it's really like social emotional, right? Like uh topics can be anywhere from like understanding their ag- aggression, like what are some triggers of their aggression versus some conflict resolution, communication, verbal, non-verbal. And we do a lot of role-playing, we do activities, um teamwork, just, and really like how like, um, sorry, connections to communities, compromising with your family, compromising with teachers, authorities. So there's a, there's a whole list of topics that we um go through because we are year-round, you know, like school is from August to ending of May, but we run through uh the summer sessions because we know when youth are idle, right? Then they get into mischief. And so it's just, um, we do conduct our counseling sessions very purposely, if that's the best way to put it, you know, because we understand. So let's just say there was a fight that happened, we will bring, you know, and we heard about it, right? We will address it with the group and have them talk about it, see if there is a need for mediation because we always want to stop retaliation. That is our first and foremost goal because we do not want kids getting hurt, but we also know that it's a safety concern for everyone. Bystanders, you know, community members and all. And, but we can, we can build that with, within curriculum topics, right? Was there something that triggered that aggression that led into a fight? Was it peer pressure? You know, um, is it a matter of safety that they feel like they're not safe when they walk home from school, which was also brought up? So we do a lot of different activities with them. We do take them outside of their community. So that's why we do have fifteen passenger vans because we want to expose them that where they live and, you know, where they are is not, that's not everything. There's, there's a bigger world, there's a bigger community that they do belong and that they deserve to feel that they belong. So trying to expose them to, you know, um, college campuses, uh, other youth, right? In neighborhoods, so we try to bridge some of these hostilities and rivalries. And so we'll do like um basketball together and so forth. Um, so these are just a lot of things that we, we do. Does, does that help?
Yes, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gunny, you have another question?
Yes.
You've been involved with these discussions about the rec center. Just curious what your sense of that issue is because that's something that's come up a bit here. We, we've been trying to understand why it's taken forever and why it's been sitting around not without any progress.
Yeah, great question. We know that the money was put in, I don't believe it was even this legislative session, right? I think it was last legislative session. Um, and I'm sorry if I did put that wrong, but I thought it was last session. Um, and so we have been doing some follow-ups, right? With especially the senators who have been, you know, kind of helping us and champion this to move along. Um, they did share that possibly they are in con- they are like in the process of a contract with, um, I don't know if it's the designers. But, um, so I, I think that is something we would all want to know a little bit more of. And uh we will do our best to follow up again because I think as much as you folks are wanting to know, the ones who want to know the most has been our youth. They have been constantly asking us. Especially because they found out that there has been money to at least start the demolition process. And so we want to ensure that we can follow through and so that they start to feel hopeful about their, um, the neighborhood that they live in.
Thank you so much for being here and for presenting.
I have a question.
Oh. Oh, Mr. Song, you had a question? Sorry.
Question, all right, two, two questions. First, where do you get your funding from?
Various sources. We are a small nonprofit. We have about, you know, twenty-something employees, but only half of that are full-timers. So we serve about anywhere of like two hundred seventy youth a week. So we always say we're small but mighty because we know that there is a lot of need. So we do, we actually do serve from Kaimuki all the way to Makaha. Um, we have been asked from other schools, but right now we just don't have the um capacity. But um first, funding-wise, it, it, it's a combination, right? Like we do have uh government, you know, federal, state, city, uh, as well as private foundations. Uh, and then lastly, we have our annual fundraiser uh coming up in November that, that is always a great um funding source for things that sometimes there's a lot of restrictions for certain grants, and so that really helps.
What is that fundraiser?
It's a uh black tie, uh, well, it's optional, but it's a, it's a gala. It's our thirty-eighth annual, annual celebration of youth. And so that's how it'd be aloha-lani the day after Thanksgiving. Um, yeah, and it's, we just honor people who have been, you know, like lifetime achievements or we do celebrate some youth who's made transformations.
My last question is, I know you're working with the students, but isn't that the school counselor's job? To be doing conflict resolution? Why do they have to bring you on campus and the school counselors aren't able to do it?
No, not at all to say that the counselors are not doing that, you know? I mean, given a big school, like for example Farrington, i- it's a pretty big populated school, right? And counselors in general, they're just inundated with like the daily scheduling, um, that's a lot of times or just a lot of the issues that kids bring up in general. And when you have something as severe as maybe two groups rivals on campus and what, you know, they may only be five to ten percent of the school population, but they can shut down the school, right? They can take the school to another level for school shutdown and lockdown. So that takes a very, I think, a much more support level. And it's kind of like that multi-tier system that the DOE does have, right? There's the general, kind of like the, like general students who don't need as much support and then it kind of gradually goes up. And at the top, like the, the principals and the schools realize that they cannot do it all. And, and we, we truly believe that it is a community, right? It takes a village to raise children. And so we are there to support the school and the staff um, as well, of course, the students. So that is why we are contracted with the school to provide that special support and extra support. If that answered your question?
So can you say you're contracted? Fine, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, I'm just curious, wondering, why wouldn't you be working in a middle school? Because in this day and age, um, with the social media, even from elementary, there's cyberbullying and um, wouldn't you think the younger you start, the better it'll be by the time they get to high school? You mentioned rivalry. It was always rivalry. I'm from Kalakaua. My husband is from Dole. It was always that by the time we went to Farrington, that rivalry was still there. Wouldn't it be better to start earlier?
Absolutely. We totally believe that. Um, but every contract, and I think that was the other question. Um, you know, it's most, it's more like an agreement, right? Because we are on campus, we are pulling, um, students out of class time, so it's, it's truly that agreement. And so principals and the school administrators have to be on board to want the service. Um, and so we, we are at certain uh a couple middle schools right now that align with the high school. And, and we really do believe that. We believe that if we, so we start with the middle school. It lets, if they're seventh graders, we will continue to serve them through high school and to graduation. And, and we are also trying to help the post-high piece as well. So, um, we very much believe in that.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Ross?
Thank you.
Yeah, so you said you, you, you are contracted by this, by the Department of Education? Or you are?
Uh, it is, it's, it's per school. So each principals and schools have their own, um, I think like, you know, funding amounts. And that's why bigger schools sometimes it's, it's based on the ratio, right? But, um, so the, the schools, the principals or, and the school administration can decide what type of support services that they would like to see on their campus.
And so as far as?
So the contract is by, with the school, not with the entire DOE, if that, if that.
So because you do so much in the entire state, do, like you said, your capacity, is your, is your, do you have enough capacity? Or do you need more?
Um, you know, we're getting there. We're trying very hard to hire more staff. Um, and, and make sure that we are, you know, with funding and so forth, that we can, we can keep up with everything to make sure that the staff and so forth, right? To be able to um support the staff. Uh, but I think that's kind of been, uh, right now, it, just in terms of the capacity, we won't, you know, be, it may be difficult to pick up an entire new group, but it's not something we're always opposed to, especially if there's a, a, a need for it. We'll always, um, willing to sit down and talk. Yes.
So as far as like funding, you know, like the, the youth, um, gym and all that stuff, that's still gonna go through the state and the housing authority, yeah? That's not in your control?
Right, for the gym, no, that is totally absolute. And, and even the activities per se, if there was like a, something for continuous activities to be conducted in the, in the public housing, that would not be through us.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanna add, if I can, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, you know, we've been working with, um, Friends, uh, Friends for Youth for so long, as far as I can remember. And they really do a good job and they do get state funding. Every year we have grant and aids for them. And as far as the school counselors, you know, they have, well, um, they have to counsel kids academically. They have to counsel them for college prep and, and so many other things as well. And they just don't have the time um to do, or the expertise to do what, what friends do. And so, um, they really, their support, but like anything else, you can't, you know, people have problems in hiring. So I'm sure they have problems getting people to wanna work uh with them, especially being a nonprofit. A lot of times you have to do it for aloha, um, because it, it is a difficult job to do. So we want to just thank for the good work that you've done to me.
Thank you, Senator Kim.
Yeah, thank you for being here to present and, and have a good evening. Thank you so much.
Yes, please, um, keep, keep uh us informed, especially, you know, it's the Halloween activity night is coming up. And if there's something that you folks feel we can partner, we would love to um partner further.
Definitely.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Aloha.
Aloha. And then now, next on the agenda is city elected officials, um, Merrick Lanzaree's representative and master clerk, right?
Aloha, everyone. Aloha, Chair, members, community, aloha. First, just some announcements uh from the mayor's office. This month's highlight for his newsletter contains an update on the rail. Also, the city unveils the Allah Respite. The Honolulu Medical Examiner has a new upgraded facility and a long-awaited hire. For the second time in thirteen months, the city opens a new lifeguard tower. And an update on renovations of the Waikiki Shell is included in the newsletter to include when it will reopen to the public. The link to the newsletter is in the chat. Also, from the Environmental Services Department, there will be sewer service charges coming up. Uh, new increases to the charges for all residential and commercial customers in fiscal year twenty-six, which starts on July first, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, ENV will present information at all upcoming neighborhood board meetings on the reasons for the increase, the amount of the increase, and what the additional revenue will be used for. Uh, they are asking for board chairs to contact Roger Babcock or Mike O'Keefe uh at Roger dot Babcock, Roger dot Babcock at Honolulu dot gov or M O'Keefe at Honolulu dot gov. Okay, in regards to follow-up issues from the previous meeting, first one was in guard regarding a dead-end sign. A request replacement of the vandalized dead-end sign on Billy Y Street near the intersection of Milani Eha. The previous sign has been vandalized. So again, thank you for the request. The DTS, the Transportation Services, issued a work order of what's called a paint and sign work order to the Department of Facility Maintenance to replace the vandalized dead-end sign on Billy Y Street. Uh, if you want more information and follow-up, please contact DFM. So thank you again for that request. The next one was involving more information on the new bus route from Kalihii to Kahala. Uh, so verifi, I'm gonna share several different cities and street names. So the Bus Seven route goes from Kalihii Valley to Kahala Mall. It was implemented on August eighteenth and averages three thousand riders per weekday in, uh, in September. It goes from Kalihii Valley to Kahala Mall, operates through Kalihii, Kalihii Kai, Ivale Downtown, Kakaako, Almawana, Makali, Moiliili, and Kaimeki, along Kalihii King, Mokawaila Streets, Nimitz Highway, Pacific Street, Ivale Road, King Bishop Queen, Piikuaikona Streets, Kapialani Boulevard, Wailai Kokohead, Pohoa Avenues, and terminating at Unakai Street. Uh, that service, uh, weekdays starts at five AM to eleven PM. And that is from the AM PM peaks, about fifteen minutes, every fifteen minutes. The base time, thirty minutes, and nights at forty minutes. On the weekends, that span of service is from six AM to eleven PM, and the frequency is every forty minutes. Uh, if you want more information on that or other bus routes, please go to www dot thebus dot org, and that is also in the chat. And the last follow-up is in regards to the Malanee Haa and Piliwai Street Bridge parking. A, a board member inquired as to why parking is prohibited on the, on the Malanee Haa Street Bridge near Piliwai Street. The intent is he's in opposition of parking there, but trying to understand why the city county finds it illegal. Uh, and then despite the no parking signs, vehicles continue to park on the bridge, compounding the issue of homelessness under the bridge. Can reports be made via the city three-one-one service? So in regards to that, D T S completed their investigation. Uh, and basically, it's a law, uh, it's a city law, the revised ordinance of Honolulu, section fifteen dash fourteen states that no person shall park a vehicle upon or beneath any bridge or other elevated structure upon a highway. As such, parking upon the Lani Haa Bridge is illegal, and no parking signage was installed to clarify this restriction. So it is recommended that you contact H P D, the non-emergency section, that's the proper way to report the violations, as opposed to the three-one-one service. Okay, that's, uh, all I have. Thank you for your patience, and I'm open to further comments. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I cannot hear.
Good afternoon, sir. Can you hear me now?
Yep, yep. Hi, Mr. Franklin.
How you doing? I got really three quick questions. Uh, does the mayor know that H P D has discontinued the crime mapping, uh, that shows the neighborhoods, they know the crime in our areas, so we can, you know, either do something about it or talk about it? That's my first question.
I am unaware if he's aware of it or not, but we can certainly find that out. Thank you.
My second question is, Hoppa, uh, that, that, uh, controls Cam four, that under the mayor, or is that under, uh, the state?
State.
State. Thank you, ma'am. Senator Kim. And my, uh, last question is, is safe routes from school gonna join the three-one-one? Uh, where if we see something that we need to report to them, that they, we can do it on the three-one-one?
Right now, I don't think that's in the plan. Uh, I would suggest, uh, continue to follow the proper procedure of either calling D F M or D T S, and I believe, uh, Lynn Robinson is willing to help with that as well.
Yes. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rohas has also a question.
Uh, yes, sir. I have one for, so for non-emergencies, so like parking, um, sidewalks or whatever, three-one-one is the number.
No, no, they're, they're recommending you call H P D directly and not use the three-one-one service for that.
Nine-one-one. Just wanted to clarify.
Yep, nine-one-one, correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any more questions, uh, from the board or the community online or in person? See?
Who is that? We don't, we don't, we send out.
At least the mayor representative.
Oh, yeah, City Council.
City Council.
Uh, Aloha, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Travis Kalula Al Thompson. Uh, I live in Kalihii Valley, uh, about seven years now. And, um, when I was listening to the H P D report here at this meeting earlier, and he was giving the statistics about the different, um, cases from September, I was kinda miss why my case, which was a dangerous dogs case, wasn't in, uh, I guess listed. I know it was on the second to last day of September. Uh, and then I added another one the next day, which is terroristic threatening from the hunters who own the dogs that attacked me and my family. So now I was wondering, how come I didn't hear that when the list was read by the H P D? And then it makes you kinda feel like, wow, my police report's not being taken seriously? Is there no one actually investigating my case? So I talked to a, a Corporal Teja Tetewati, and I sent her all the information that I had today on the subject, but I, I mean, maybe, I guess I just, I'm trying to follow up with everyone that I can to try and see some kind of accountability in this situation, because it's come to my awareness, as someone who's lived in that neighborhood for a long time, I felt very safe. I've never had any issues back there walking my dogs almost every day. And then on September twenty-ninth afternoon, halftime of a Sunday night football game, bunch of loose hunting dogs are just on us, me, my two dogs, my wife, uh, out of the, kinda nowhere, from the Ice Ponds Trailhead at the very end of Kalihii Street. And it's come to my attention that just going past that fence is an illegal act, is trespassing. So then hunting past that fence where they were is an illegal act, illegal hunting. And then even if they were legally hunting, when they entered my neighborhood, they should have, there's leash laws, so all their dogs should have been on leash. Um, and then after the dogs attacked us, they were supposed to stop and render aid, like as if it was in a car accident kind, where, you know, you exchange insurance, I'm assuming, or something like that. And then none of that happened. Uh, found out a police report, um, and then we were able to get some sort of security camera footage of them fleeing the scene from one of our neighbors down Kalihii Street. We posted that on socials, and then the next day we get death threatened from these hunters ostensibly, if that's who it was. Of course, they called from a null number listed, and then I had to try and like reverse engineer through Verizon, and then Verizon said they probably just used an app, and that's how come it reads as a funny number, nine-nine-nine-nine-nine. And then, you know, then I gotta take my life more seriously, my investigation, and look on my own behalf to try and find out who these guys are. And all the information I've been gathering, which is pretty decent now at this point, in terms of potentially identifying suspects, I've given to the police, and I just want to make sure that someone is following up and holding, I guess, these, for lack of a better word, criminals accountable. Because, um, it's come to my attention, we had sort of an emergency neighborhood meeting in the back of Kalihii Valley at Shojinji at the temple there, where people were able to voice a history of a lot of trespass going on back there, a lot of illegal dumping going on back there. Um, and then, you know, violence, criminality, um, and other elements that I think, you know, hunters with loose dogs seems like one of the last possible issues, you know, that should be important, but I think about all the kukuna who walk my street in their wheelchairs with their dogs. I think about the little kids on the e-bikes that are flying around, you know what I mean? Like, with no adult supervision, what if they attract dogs on them, you know? And, uh, I guess I just wanna try and be, um, I don't wanna say poster boy, my wife definitely doesn't want me to be that, you know? But I wanna try and just throw my hat, my, um, I guess, story into the ring and try and see what it takes to get some kind of accountability back there. I know the police were stationed back there for to try and stop the hiking during COVID. And, um, I think, I mean, I, I guess that made me feel more safe, you know? But, um, I don't know, I was just kind of amiss to find out that my case wasn't involved in the police report concerning Kalihii Valley, um, neighborhood, of which I'm a member. And so I just want to feel like I need to even make more noise now and squeak my wheels as loud as possible.
Yeah, Mr. Tom. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, thank you very, very much for that. Um, my heart goes out to you. I apologize. I don't think anybody should have to go through that. I hope, uh, this can be looked at as soon as possible. Uh, we will send that information, uh, to H P D and see what we can do. We did get that similar report earlier when you shared that for community concerns, so I'm, I'm pretty sure we have the information we need. I also wanna thank board members who were willing to get involved as well, uh, claiming, you know, document everything, get it going so we can send it to the proper, proper authorities to take care of the action. I apologize that it wasn't on that report. We will continue to look into it to see what we can do to remedy or get close to remedying that situation. But thank you for, for sharing. I appreciate that, Mr. Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board online or in person at this time? Or Mr. Rohas, you have another question?
Yeah, just wanted to follow up on, um, Kiloana and Kilo, um, Kalihii Street and the no parking sign that will be posted or not will be posted, sir?
That's again, Kiloana and Kalihii?
Yes. Were the last, um, there's a bridge where there was doing, uh, there, there was a, uh, homeless encampment under the bridge before, oh.
That's, that's different from the other one, yeah, than Malanee Haa, Piliwai.
Yes, that's different.
Yeah, um, I'm not quite sure where that is now. We can look at it again, uh, and then double-check where that is in process presently or needs more work in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are, um, no more, oh, yeah, one more question. Okay, one more question.
Um, Debbie Ozama Park, thirty-six thirty Kalihii Street resident. So my, I think, I, I'm curious to know, um, in regards to telephone lines and trees. Um, in Kalihii, you know, it's so lush, everything grows really fast, and I've been calling Hawaii Electric for a while in regards to tree branches growing into the lines and pulling the lines. And I remember one time co- confronting the, the tree trimmers, and I asked him, why can't you just cut the tree? And why are you just trimming the branches? They're gonna grow like in a couple of months, you know? And they said, well, who can clean the rubbish? I mean, that was his reasoning to me, and I'm like, oh my God, that's so lame, but my concern is, you know, um, they could just leave their, their branches on the ground. It'd, it'd be really good compost, you know, but the whole, the whole thing is now the trees have, branches are interwoven into these power lines, which before Maui happened, like the same month, we had a little mini fire in Kalihii Valley. I don't know if anybody knows, you guys know about that? So the, the trees, the hau trees was in the line, and it was rubbing, and it was super windy that, that whole month, right? Windy, windy, windy. And then it caused friction, and then the, the bushes was on fire past the bridge, the last bridge in Kalihii Street. There was a fire caused by trees and caused by the power line. And so now my concern is, and I've called Hawaii Electric, uh, regarding two areas between, it's around thirty-six eighteen and past my house, thirty-six thirty. These two areas, one right by the bridge, and it's totally intertwined into the power line, really bad. And, um, yeah, we're still waiting. And one, the telephone pole is actually being pulled down slightly already because the branches are just heavy. And so, um, that's my concern. A lot of times, I think, in Kalihii Valley, because we're so remote, um, we're the last resort or something like that, we're always late. We, we're not, we're not, um, uh, in public as, as everything else, nobody can see. That's how we feel sometimes. That we're just blind, you know, people got blinds on when they're looking at us, but yeah, I'm concerned about that, because especially if it's windy, um, I'm afraid either the, the telephone pole won't come down or it's gonna cause another mini fire. So that's my concern. Thirty-six eighteen and past thirty-six thirty, that's the address.
Got it. Thank you so much. We, we can send that in also. Maybe D F M could take care of that as well. They have done it various other times, but thank you for that. That's on Kalihii Street, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And if there are no more questions, and if we're all good with questions, then we can, I want to first off, thank you, um, Bad Master Clark for being here, and have a good evening. And we will on, thank you. And we will go on to, uh, up next is council member Tyler Dos Santos, Tam. Uh, Lynn Robinson.
Aloha Chair, aloha board, board members and community members. It's, it's me, Lynn again. Um, I, I'll try to be as brief as possible. I did put my contact information into the chat, also a link to council members newsletters. Um, but I just realized that October didn't get uploaded yet, so I will, um, I will follow up on that, and you might wanna, yeah, circle back to the site, um, maybe tomorrow. Um, I'm not sure, I, it's hard for me to see who's there. Um, is board member Hussey there?
No.
He's not in the chat.
Okay, well, um, I can update you folks, and then I'll be sure to follow up with him personally. Um, but he had asked about the street murals that are near the schools um, um, around the city. And so I, I did get, um, some information from the Complete Streets, from Renee over at Complete Streets. And so that link is also in the chat, if, if anyone else wants to, um, check it out and look at the process of maybe doing that at, um, some of the schools in Kalihii Valley. Um, and then I know that, um, Senator Kim's office had, had said that he had some concerns about traffic hazards at Hola Drive and Kapalama Avenue, so, um, I just was gonna get some clarification on that. Again, I will just reach out to him personally. Um, I did, um, board member Koga, I did put in a request uh, for a speed study and, and speeding enforcement on Kalihii Street between, um, Perry and Monte Street. Um, they asked me for some more information. So I had emailed you, um, just maybe about specific times and, and any other details that you can give me about the nature of the speeding there, so that, um, they know when they should be going out to, um, uh, you know, observe and enforce. So, um, if you have, when you have time, if you could send me those details, I'll make sure that, um, that gets to H P D and, um, and D T S. I also, um, um, board member Franklin, I sent you a, a respectful email, just when you have a chance, please just send me whatever you have about the faded crosswalks, and I'll make sure that we get those requests in. I'll, I'll send you updates when those service requests are generated. Um, just so you know, and, um, I also wanted to let, um, everyone know that we have requested a meeting with, um, the Department of Parks and Recreation to do, uh, another site visit specifically with, uh, Brandon Kono, who handles the region. Um, because there are still outstanding, um, improvements that need to happen there. Um, that we have, we have a, a list that we also, from the Department of Design and Construction, about things that should be in the queue. And we just wanna make sure everything squares. And then we have a better idea about what we need to continue to request um, for improvements over there, like the roof. Um, things have moved kind of slowly, they've been moving, but, um, anyhow, we're, we're gonna do another site visit over there. Um, I think, oh, I did wanna, uh, follow up with board member Rohas, um, just that, um, I appreciate your continued advocacy with the community and, um, and then close neighbors over at the Kiloana, uh, Kalihii Bridge site. Um, I, it's my understanding that much of that has been alleviated, many, there were many arrests made, and there was, there's continued, um, cleanups coordinated by the community policing team and the Department of Facility Maintenance. So, um, I know that you, you'll be coordinating community members to do kind of, um, whatever's kind of left, um, over there. Please, um, I, I appreciate that you're, you know, have reached out for training, so that, you know, we make sure that everyone can be safe and, uh, have all the tools that they need. Please include our. Please include our office. We can also have staff there to help. So, okay, I think unless there's any other questions, you know, that's all I have.
I still have one.
Mr. Hoss has a question?
Yes. What about the parking signs? Are we gonna finalize that so we can close that up?
Our office didn't put in the parking signs. The mayor's office put in that request for the parking signs. So, yeah, like I would have to do a separate request. I don't know that that would be the best idea. I think that we should let the mayor's office...
Because it looks like he didn't, he had no clue about it. We've been asking for this for long already. I've been in this member for two years now. Let's fix it.
When we spoke about it last month, Bandmaster was tracking and it said that the request had been put in. Bandmaster, I can follow up with you.
Yeah, you can certainly do that, Lynn, or we can also continue to look back on some of our notes from previous meetings and then go to the proper place to find out where it's at right now, for sure. We can do that and then get back to you, Lynn.
Yeah, great. I don't, I'm gonna make an assumption that if that has not been a no parking zone up until this time, that that would be referred to the Department of Transportation to make an assessment because it would be all a new thing, right? It's not just a replacement of signage. So, but I will circle back with you, Bandmaster.
Yeah.
According to our previous meetings, at one point you said it was already approved, that they will put a parking sign. But then what are we, so I'm asking for an update. When are we going to put a parking sign?
I don't recall the ever hearing that it was approved. I don't think that, yeah. I think that the review is what we expected because it is not currently a no parking area. Like it is, yeah. I had kind of hoped that before we put in that request, that the board would have done like a resolution to, had a consensus there because it's, like I had mentioned, it's a little controversial because the community members then utilized that for parking as well. So the idea would be like get all the mopeds out of there, get all the people that shouldn't be parked there because of the illegal activities that were going on under the bridge and give, and use that as, you know, parking for residents over there. So let us follow up. And, you know, the request did go in. I do not believe that we are at a place where it was approved, but we will get your status.
Well, definitely follow up. Thank you.
So, Lynn, I got a question.
Oh, Mr. Franklin has a question.
I have a question for Ms. Robinson. Lynn, my question is, I just saw that Alawana got cameras as long as Chinatown. They need to update on if we're gonna get motion detectors and a camera, one camera for our park that in Kalihi Valley?
I don't, I don't believe it's gonna happen. I think we did the assessment and the hard answer was no. The Chinatown cameras are a little bit different because they're not necessarily in the parks.
We should just write a resolution stating how dangerous our parks are. Yes, that's why I say that. Needs a resolution committee so we can write a resolution showing how dangerous our parks are and that we need to do it. At least the board can do it. So if someone get raped like at Wilson Tunnel, at least the board will show that we did something before these incidents happened. So we just need to write a resolution.
I don't think that's a bad idea at all.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
We'll go from there.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any more questions from the board online or in person? And are there any questions from the community online or in person?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Sung has a question.
I have two follow-up questions from last month. First one was the one about the bill about empty housing. You know, the one that says if your house is empty for six months or longer and the property is worth over a million dollars. Wanna know a little bit more about that, you know, where is it in the, throughout the proceeding? I know that's Mr. Waters' bill. And who is he really targeting? Because it seems like it's, you know, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So that's my first thing. And then the second part is, any update on the no parking from three to five on the Mono Road?
Can you repeat your second one? Your second?
The no parking from three to five on the Mono Road, N U M A N A?
Oh, yeah. I think I emailed you about that, right? That that riser went in?
You did not, I don't think I seen that.
Do, okay, so we should establish the best way to communicate so I can follow up with you on both of these issues. Do you wanna email me or call? Email's probably best. Does that work for you?
Yeah, I'll email you from my work email. That one's low, so I'll do that.
But can you, you probably can't, I don't know that you can see in the chat. Do you wanna jot down my email?
Sure. First dot, last name at...
Yep, so it's L dot Robinson, R O B I N S O N at honolulu.gov. And I'll be happy to follow up with you that, that request went in. You know, obviously, I can, I can, I can get you to the information about the status of the empty homes tax bill. You know, our office isn't gonna be able to speak to the intent and Chair Waters', you know, thoughts about it. But I can, I can access general information about, about the bill.
And I was just wondering because, you know, it seems like it's gonna be attacking, you know, the, most of the houses here is about a million dollars in Kalihi. And so that's gonna affect, you know, if it's, if you're trying to get a permit to renovate your house or maybe if there's a wildfire or your parents passed away and you're trying to deal with probate. You're going through all these traumas and now you gotta deal with this tax fine because you can't, you're in a stuck position for six months. Now you gotta pay a ten thousand dollar tax fine. Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that would, that wouldn't, that is not the intent of the bill. The intent of the bill is to prevent outside, non-resident investors from keeping homes, you know, right, empty and taking away from opportunities for residents, for people who live here to have those homes. So it wouldn't be to penalize somebody just because they can't live in their home for some amount of time. It's not intended for residents here. But, but I can follow up with you and I can absolutely put you in touch with Chair Waters' office as well. They've got knowledgeable people over there that I'm sure would be able to, you know, be more than willing to talk to you about it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Are there any more questions from the community, online or in person?
Yeah, maybe. Aloha, I'm Debbie Azama Park. I might still have a chair here or something like that, but anyway. My question is, so in regards to trespassing laws and in Kalihi Valley where we are and in the past, Karafu Kanaga helped us out a lot. And we worked with DLNR, we worked with Border Water, we worked with DOT and we had Zoom during that time with everybody. How, how, how much can we support, can we get from your office in regards to maintaining that collaboration? I mean, what we, what we had at that time was really solid. And even though the, what Fukunaga did was raise the, raise the violation amount from five hundred to, I think it went up to twenty-five or two thousand, something like that. The only problem that we had as residents was the enforcement because enforcing of just raising the dollar amount of a violation wasn't necessarily chasing, wasn't deterring people. So how, you know, how can we be more effective at these kinds of laws?
Well, firstly, our office would be happy to collaborate with you and obviously, you know, it's a very important thing. Trespassing should not be allowed and needs to be strictly enforced. So we're happy to work with you. It sounds like, you know, maybe our office could, you know, give some nudges and build better relationships to be able to, you know, push enforcement and, because our laws are only as good as them being enforced. So I'm not sure exactly where you're talking about because I'm fairly new to the issue. But if that was an HPD issue, obviously, you know, we can have those conversations with Chief Logan or whomever we need to about, you know, much needed enforcement. If it's a DLNR issue, we can work with our state partners and get enforcement. So maybe it might be a thing that we need to start, you know, we need to have those meetings again. And, you know... Yeah, if you wanna reach out, you know, feel free to contact me and maybe we can, you know, get that hui together, all those stakeholders together again and take a good look at what's been done and how we can improve upon it and how we can, you know, get better enforcement.
Because I think that every, you know, Kalihi Valley way in the back at the end of Kalihi Street, I mean, we have different issues, you know, in regards to where we're situated in the valley and the nature reserve and all of that kind of stuff. So, and like I said, Border Water, DLNR, so many different landowners where we are. So I think that would be great if we can get together and potentially meet with the community, especially the, our neighbors that got attacked by the dogs. That's, to me, it's a, it's an urgent cry for protection of our residents, you know? And it's, it's our, it's people that living outside of our community now that are coming in. And so how do we, how do we, how do we live with all of that? You know, how can we open up our community or do we open up our community? How much do we open? That's also a discussion too, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think that you, I think that Kalihi's a very welcoming place, but nobody wants to be attacked by dogs and have people trespassing where they should not be. I would just add that just recently, over at the Kaila Hana Bridge, HPD said, was very clear about signage. So if this is an HPD issue and we were, and once we were able to get no trespassing signage over there, it was a game changer for enforcement. So I don't know if that applies here, but certainly we, something we could talk about in this meeting. Do you think that you could email me?
Sure, yes.
Okay, okay. And you want me, you wanna jot down? You want me to give you the email one more time? I know it's a little, it's, the chat's only good for the people that are right online. One more time?
Go ahead.
It's L dot Robinson, R O B I N S O N at honolulu.gov, G O V.
Great.
And I'll be happy to, yeah, let's talk about who those stakeholders were that you were meeting with before and see if we can get the hui back together again and look at what we can do moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the community, online or in person?
I just, I just wanted to add one comment. Aloha, my name is Lynn Robinson. My name is Travis Kaluulau Thompson. I'm from Kalihi Valley, Honolulu. I am the guy that got attacked by the dogs, apparently is how I've been known henceforth in my neighborhood. I just wanted to add on this issue that there's a certain kind of sense of desperation, I think, that's very understated right now. I was originally supposed to meet with Allison Blair, Honolulu News Now, tomorrow morning to do an interview on the subject and I've since been dissuaded by nearly all my neighbors. They're so afraid of the potential for retaliation. And they're so afraid, you know, because my wife got death threats, that, you know, these are armed people who apparently like to travel in packs, you know? And I, like I stated twice, I think, before in this neighborhood board meeting, I believe in a squeaky wheel against the grease. I believe you actually are more safe if you are public facing and you get more people involved and especially since there apparently seems to be an epidemic of dog attacks, quite frankly, going on. And it's leading to dead ranchers, it's leading to dead livestock, it's leading to shootouts in Hawaiianai and all kinds of other like, you know, attendant issues that, that begin, quite frankly, with armed people thinking they have a right and are entitled to do what they like against tax-paying, innocent citizenry. So I don't know, I just feel like I needed to share that, wanted to put that out there. And just wanna share my frustration and thank you very much for hearing me today.
No, I honor and clearly hear you and understand your frustration. I'm so sorry for what you had gone through. This issue of dog attacks was just brought to the forefront in the media. And, you know, many of us may not have been aware before about what a prevalent issue this is. It's absolutely unacceptable. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm super sad to hear about anyone who's doing the right thing being pressured by community members not to come forward. You know, we can't address the issues unless, you know, we, everyone fully understands and hears from the people that are experiencing these things. So, you know, if our office can help at all, I mean, like, you know, I hope that you'll be part of the hui. I hope that, you know, when we're talking, when we're addressing these trespassing issues, it can cert, you know, you'd certainly be a welcome voice. I can tell that, you know, you're gonna be a valued leader in your community. So, but otherwise, if you, you know, if there's something that you feel like council member can do to, you know, move this issue along or, I don't know, just please reach out to our office. We're here, we're, you know, to help.
Thank you. Are there any more, any more questions from the community, online or in person? And if not, then we can move on. I wanna thank you again, Lynn Robinson, for responding. Have a good evening, okay?
Aloha, Chair.
Aloha. Up next, next on the agenda is Governor Josh Green, Representative Deputy Director Kristin Sakamoto. I hope we can hear you tonight.
Hi, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Sorry, I apologize again for the technical difficulties last month. So I dropped a link to the governor's newsletter in the chat and I will just really, to keep this brief, jump to the follow-up items from last month. So there were several questions relating to the presentation that was given by Benjamin Park from the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. So I just wanted to let you know, Chair, that if there are additional questions, we invite you to contact Benjamin Park. And if any members of the public have questions for them, I can give you their email address. It's H P H A at hawaii.gov. There was also another question about community outreach at Cam 4 Housing. And the governor's office, governor's office has been in discussions and they are interested in understanding the types of outreach that is desired. So if the board has any specific requests or recommendations, I can take that back to the governor's office for their consideration to see how they can assist. That's all I have and I'm open to any questions or comments that I can take back. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board online or in person, Mr. Franklin?
Yes, I have one for the governor because, you know, I started this on Cam 4. I didn't understand how we can have HAPA in charge of Cam 4 and it's a state program and the governor let HAPA has no community outreach in that place whatsoever. and it's a state program and the governor, uh, let HAPA has no community outreach in that place whatsoever. So, uh, the community outreach is anything that would uplift and empower the people so they don't recycle theirselves back in there by giving them any uplifting. I mean, it's been ten years since they, community center's been condemned and they still in the planning phases of that. Uh, so, because Cam 4 is in our area, it, it just, I'm bewildered as to why there is no anything there. I mean, what kind of programs, how about educational program, uh, 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 youth government program? How about anything that will show those children there that they can have a better life maybe than their parents? So, what we're looking for is any type of outreach because it's, it's, I don't understand how HAPA or the governor don't understand that those people need that type of outreach. And, and I say that because I grew up in a Cam 4. And it took a lot for me to get out of a Cam 4 with zero help. So, I'm asking the governor, how do we have a housing complex where we looked at these people, the most disadvantaged people of all that made mistakes in their life? And how we're not trying to correct that either with them or their children to uplift, empower them to get a better life? So, any community outreach would be something because to just say, we gave the people in Cam 4, we told them, here's sixteen hundred dollars, go organize yourself, is outrageous. So, that's what I don't understand. It's a state program and it's, it's, it's controlled by the governor? And yet in these housing development, there is no outreach to empower and uplift them. So, I guess anything you could think of would be, uh, great, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin, I appreciate your comments. I will, um, take your suggestions back to the governor's office.
Are there any questions or even suggestions, um, for outreaches for capital housing on the board, online or in person? Mr. Rojas?
I just have one for, you know, it's been, um, an issue about the gym or recreations for kids. Um, what's been taking so long as far as, is it because of funding not being given by the federal government? Or it's not being, um, uplifted at the, um, legislature for funding? Um, how many more years are you gonna wait for this process? Or, I mean, it's been, uh, I've been in this board for a couple of years now and, uh, it seems like, I've been in the military, it just take action and consistent, you know, um, repeatedly, how we can adjust this situation? I think it can be fixed, um, like, we're all the same, you know? No, no matter what community we came from and if we need it, as needed, I think we can adjust the situation.
I know that, um, a similar question had come up earlier in the year. I was looking back at my notes, I believe, back in around February or March. And back at that time, the board had recently approved an application for the demolition that would go to HUD, the federal agency. Um, but I can check back in with, um, Hawaii Public Housing Authority to see on the status since then and report back.
Are there any more questions, uh, from the board, online or in person, or the community actually, from, um, online or in person, Mr. Song?
Can I change the subject?
Uh, change the subject, yeah, yeah, any questions from the government?
So, I'm changing the subject on you, um, and it's, uh, want to bring it up about something the government talking about, uh, on the, on the news. You've been talking about captive insurance. Um, and my question is, is the governor trying to do the state doing the captive insurance itself and funding it with taxpayers' money? Or is he expecting, uh, gonna allow, um, the businesses to do captive insurance? And me, to me, that would make more sense for education within the, the state for the businesses, the condos and all them to have their own captive insurance. And how is he gonna go about educating them about it to lower the insurance rate in the state? And if he wants recommendations, I am volunteering to, uh, um, do the funding, uh, for seminars for this topic. Do it on, uh, the section eight thirty-one B. Um, and bring in all the people, Utah has one of the best, uh, captive insurance, uh, uh, in the country. Utah and Delaware. And the person that advises Utah on their captive insurance, uh, programs over there, I'm willing to fly him in and do a seminar on this captive insurance.
Okay. Um, I do not know the answers, but I will talk to the governor's office and follow up and thank you for, um, volunteering. I will get back to you guys, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the board or the community, online or in person? And if, uh, not, then I want to thank you, um, Kristin Sakamoto was, oh, you have one more?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, Mr. Rojas has another question.
This is regarding the, um, trespassers for, um, at the upper Kalih Valley. So, I know they have been having pig hunters trespassing into, I guess, whatever entry point it is. It could be from the street or it could be along the riverside. So, would that be, could we get support from the DLNR to bring in, um, maybe on our next meeting? To address, what kind of support they can give us?
Uh, just to clarify, so, I'm sorry, the, the location, um, you believe there's state land involved, it's at the back of the valley?
Yeah, it's the back, the back of Kalih Valley, like the very end of Kalih Street by where the, um, Ice Ponds, uh, hike is. And there's the old border water supply service road. There's a big gate there, so there's, you know, um, hi, uh, hunters parking, you know, further down Kalih Street, wa, you know, walking up. Um, I'm not sure if you were on earlier, my husband and I, our two dogs were attacked by off-leash hunting dogs, um, on a couple Sundays ago. So, um, yeah, so if someone from DLNR is able to come, well, we can plan to the next month's board meeting.
Um, perhaps, um, Chair, um, may I suggest that we can maybe work together if you want to invite a member of DLNR to your meeting? I can help assist with that if.
Okay. Yeah, we can plan that as well and have DLNR come to the meeting on November.
Oh, sorry, can, can maybe border water too, because that's their property.
Oh, okay, border water.
So, the property that they're trespassing initially is border water.
Actually, border water to be here, but their representative is not, so. I, I could try to actually email her directly as well, or we can all have an email together, but you have a several questions?
Yeah, yeah, I think it, it will be so important for the, um, DLNR enforcement though to, um, be part of the next meeting for, you know, uh, because it's, I think it, that's where the main resource is at. Where everyone is, you know, uh, good at activities. So, we need that, that, that's part of the, um, the section. And then, of course, we already kind of informed it to the city side where, where, we're talking about from the street entry or whatever other entries. So, they can be involved as, as well. So, I think, because DLNR is part of the state that I'm assuming, um, that would be a, a big progress for you guys for next meeting.
Okay. If we, uh, address the issue with the border water supply with Iris?
Yeah, that's what, she's not here though.
No, she's not here, but if we can, uh, inform her what the question would be before she come.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of times when we ask her a question, we know anybody, they gotta go back, research and come back. If we can't make her aware of the question before she come, she can go contact the resources she need and come back, we don't answer.
So, that opens up more question to you ma'am. Um, I would say what DLNR can do for us before they come to the meeting and then maybe they can address that situation as far as protecting us, uh, protecting the entrance into the, uh, state side, which is a DLNR restriction. And, um, so that way they can, you know, we can, the neighborhood can be, can be well informed and also they can be, they can feel more safer in that, in that area. As well. So, that, that, those are the kind of questions we should be asking and she'll be coming back next month if, if she could give those information.
So, we'll do an email together, but you was, I wanted to follow up on last time. Is any questions online or in person from the community or the board members? And if not, um, um, well, thank you Kristin Sakamoto.
Thank you.
Um, and your audio, audio is working great now, but, um, thank you and have a good evening. Um, up next?
Thank you.
Thank you. And up next is Senator Donna Mercado Kim's office.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the community report, my community report has been sent digitally to all of the neighborhood board members and any community members that have signed up to receive a digital. Uh, community updates, uh, Marvin Oshiro did call our office regarding not getting any updates from DOH on the clean and sober homes. Uh, we did follow up with Ilani Cummings, DOH Drug and Alcohol Division, Clean and Sober. And she confirmed that DOH did receive the case and that there is action, but unable to disclose the specific details. She said that she will reach out to Mr. Oshiro and speak with him, so I'm not sure that she's already done that. Um, my office also got emails from Chair, yourself, as well as board member Rojas. Um, and this was on the Nah, 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 Bridge Parking, which has been addressed by the city. And to, I was aware that there is no parking on the bridge and we did send that information to you folks. As well as the intersection of Hala and Kapalama, um, that is a city street. And therefore, we did refer that issue to, uh, Councilmember De Los Santos's town's office, which I believe was mentioned this evening. That's basically the report. I did want to comment as far as the, uh, pig hunters and, uh, Kalih Valley is not the only valley. So, don't feel like you folks are, or we're being ignored. Kalih, um, Monolo Valley as well is my district and we've had DLNR come to their meeting. Basically, the pig hunters have to have permits and the problem is the enforcement. And while a dog did not attack an individual, it did attack somebody else's dog, one of the, one of the residents' dogs. And basically, uh, they put up signs, uh, but as far as having any kind of physical, um, people there to enforce, they just don't have the manpower, they don't have, um, the resources to do so. And even if they did have the resources, they're not able to even fill a lot of positions. Because as you know, uh, we can't even fill garbage positions and, and lifeguard. We have one of our parks full in Monolo, because the city can't find lifeguards, uh, to be able to, to manage the poles. So, that problem is prevalent in case, um, the state. Also, you recall Stairway to Heaven, all of the violations and people were putting on social media how they went up. Even though there were signs, there were chains and, you know, the police would regularly go over there, uh, you still had the violators. So, I'm just trying to be, uh, set reality in is that you're gonna hear that from DLNR because, uh, com- community in the valley, I also heard that. Um, problem with cameras is not just having the cameras and the cost to put up cameras. Uh, when I was on the city council, we found money to put cameras at all of our estate, uh, like the Poly Lookout and other visitor areas because cars were getting broken into and things were being stolen and cameras went in. But they couldn't monitor the cameras. The police didn't have the time to sit and monitor and watch the cameras. And so, even though they caught something after the fact, they were never able to get there in time to do anything, uh, with that. And so, uh, they ended up disbanding and the cameras would get busted and people would break in. And so, there were a lot of problems and so we ended up not having any cameras there. So, just thought I'd share that experience, um, with, with you all on the problems that they have with enforcement and camera monitor. So, I'm open to questions.
Senator Kim, if they.
Yes.
Post the picture of themselves doing this, can the police not use that sort of self-admission of committing these crimes?
Well, one, they have to find them if it's a visitor, if it's a visitor or something, they have to identify and find them. You know, find, and then they have to prosecute. The prosecutor sometime will not prosecute because they have other more, um, prevalent cases or life-threatening cases. Then they have to take it to a judge and then they, you know, so there's a, there's a long process that they go through. Um, so it's, again, it's time-consuming and it takes a lot of manpower.
Mr. Franklin?
A lot of times the cameras don't identify them really well on camera.
Well, no, but when you're in a social media profile, usually your name is right there. So, it's easier to identify.
My, my question ma'am is, it, because we are four hundred officers down, has the, uh, the legislative thinking about, or the mayor thinking about starting a security guard cyber unit? Where, you know, they're one-third the cost of police officers. And it's a, they could be either the same people that guards the airport, uh, uh, internet, that, uh, international security guard company, they're at our airports already, where they just have a cyber unit. We just pay for them to monitor the cameras and they can send the police there. Their price is, a security guard is making like fifteen dollars an hour versus a police officer. So, we had a Honolulu cyber unit of security guards and all they do is sit there, monitor cameras and direct the police where they need to go because we're four hundred officers down. So, uh, that would solve a lot of our problems with cameras. We can put a camera anywhere and link it into the cyber unit and it's being monitored twenty-four seven by maybe five security guards who actually call the police and say, hey, somebody's breaking in over here. They can direct the police where we need them to go. And it's really cheap to do and it is really affordable. And it will, it will help us with the four hundred officers that we're down on. And they don't need to go through all the background checks, anything else. And if the city do not want to hire them, so they, on the city's salary, they can just contract it out to the same security guard company that is doing our airports. So, have they thought of, let's just have a cyber unit and let's go to twenty twenty-four and use the technology where and have a camera system monitor. They're safe, they're not going anywhere, they're in a building and they can just make a phone call.
Well, that sounds really simple. Uh, first of all, it's determined if, one, who will do it? Two, you gotta get a contract and whether or not we can even, um, uh, they can find, like right now at the airport, they're short of, of these contract workers. Uh, the other thing is when they call, again, are there gonna be police officers available to get there and get there while they're in the act of doing it? Uh, because many times by the time they get there, it's, it's not done. Um, and again, the breakage of the cameras, I mean, there's a lot of issue, it seems really simple. And then the attorneys get involved because then there's liability. Now, if you have a camera and somebody gets hurt, then they're going to then sue the city, sue the state because why weren't you there when you're supposed to be there? So, um, there's a lot of issue, but please bring that up when they come before you because I would like to hear what they have to say as well.
Yes ma'am, I will. Thank you.
And Mr.? Got a question?
Yes, Senator Kim, um, so, as far as your past, uh, experience with Monolo Valley, you said?
Yes.
Uh, DLNR was involved as well?
Yes, yes, well, yes.
As the, um, community over here was at Kalih Valley, hear, heard you as far from your experience. So, from here, uh, do they still have the same problem then? As far as, because DLNR are not very effective in their, in their, um, because they're short staffed or they're not, like you said, not enough enforcement? Um, i- is it still the same? What did the state do to make that improvement, oh, so it?
Well, it's, it's, it's a problem. And, um, one of the things they did was they stopped all hunting. They tried to do all hunting and then the pigs are coming in and then illegals are going in, people who shouldn't be there, trying to handle the problem. And then they had dogs that attacked other animals and other dogs from the residents on there. So, that didn't work. So, finally, the residents asked that they allow the Pig Hunters Association back in so that they could have some kind of control over the pigs and, and somehow identify these people. Because you have to have a permit in order to hunt. But again, you can't, you can't have somebody there twenty-four seven standing at the gate. Now, Monolo, uh, Valley do have gates that they can link, but they get over it anyway. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't stop them. The other problem was that they also go to the Stairway of Heaven, um, through Monolo Valley. And so, when they had, uh, the, they're gonna break down the stairway, they blocked off everything again and wouldn't even let the pig hunters in because they couldn't discern who were pig hunters and who were going up to the, to the stairs. And so, then they stopped the, um, the demolition of it. And so, we asked them to, again, you know, allow the pig hunters. So, they do allow now the Pig Hunters Association only to be permitted to go there and they have signage. But that has this, again, you know, you can't be twenty-four seven, you can't catch all the speeders, you can't catch all the break-ins to the cars. I mean, it is enforcement, right?
Yeah.
So, unless you need somebody twenty-four seven.
Yeah, well, we're not asking for twenty-four seven. So, I guess from what we're gonna ask for a community is to work together as, as, you know, as a Yeah, well, we're not asking for twenty-four seven, so I guess from what we're gonna ask for a community is to work together as, as, you know, as a community. So we're gonna identify if those, those, um, pig hunters are, like, for example, they're part of the pig association, uh, which is they have permits. So if we say for the community, if we can get together, now we gotta do our part. So now we gotta protect our own community, and because DLNR are short-staffed, from what I, from what we're gonna know next month. And, um, so from there, we're gonna police the area, which is, make sure that they, these hunters that's been threatening all of our, our community, if they have permits, if they don't, then that's why DLNR gotta come and support us hard.
Well, you know, the valley is very close-knit, and they do try to police their own as well, but there's a problem, because they cannot approach anybody, they cannot ask to see their permits. They, they cannot approach, because then if they get into some kind of a conflict, or, you know, pig hunters have guns, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of issues, so they're warned.
We're gonna protect our item, we're gonna protect our community, we gotta get back our community.
I understand, but somebody gets shot and killed, then there is this whole.
Can I help you, because I, we only protect ourselves.
If the residents get shot and killed, then we need to.
We have, we, we have the freedom to wear arms, right? So that's all I can add, because they're here too, I'm, I'm here to support them, so all I can say.
No, I am too, I, but I get, I don't mind.
I'm just saying that we should just be together, and hopefully we can, you know, work together and see if we can find out if this hunters have their permit or not. There's gotta be a way that we can do it, so.
Again, I can only share with you the experience that other communities have gone through and continue to go through.
Oh, you're the Chinese to not agree, in the valley.
It may be very helpful of at least the, the very, these extreme, you know, per, you know, cases. There was an arrest made or something, right, with the case with Mr. Thompson, really. Certainly, when people go that far, there should be a written arrangement.
So that's why the police comes in, or everybody comes in, right? You know, we're not gonna go and say, you know, hey, get out of my place, we're gonna shoot you. We're gonna call the police first, and then we're gonna identify if they have the permit or not, because of course, they're gonna have to have one entry, which is the city side.
Now, by the time the police come, though, that they're gone, how do you, how do you detain them from leaving?
Well, you know, I'm trying, I just gonna try, we're trying, one step at a time.
Um, Mr. Franklin, actually, I have a question.
Senator Kim, I just wanted to say, I don't know if your staff told you, I told them last month, I wanted to thank you for your knowledge and your wisdom and being a straight shooter.
He told me.
I really appreciate that, and I, the board has to understand the power we have, the right resolutions, and to use the power we have to do things we need to do. So we are gonna form a resolution committee and, and understand what you told us, the light bulb did go off, and I want to thank you for your knowledge.
You're welcome, that's why I'm here.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Is there any more questions from the board or the community online or in person?
I have a comment.
Oh, Mr. So?
Let's do it.
There's a comment?
I just wanna say, uh, your new, uh, representative did an excellent job, and she gets two thumbs up from us.
Oh, thank you, I think she's, I think she's on, she, she was on.
Yes, thank you, I, I appreciate it, it was nice to meet all of you the last time, thank you, Senator.
Really appreciated all your, uh, wisdom and everything, you're more than welcome to come anytime you want.
Oh, thank you so much.
No, our staff, our staff works all day, and then they do come and monitor the meetings that are up till late, and then they come in early the next morning, and so, yeah, you know, they work overtime, they don't get paid for overtime. Just so you know.
Thank you again for being here, I hope both of you and Kathy have a great evening, take care.
Appreciate that, appreciate the work you folks do.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is, um, Representative Mamie Zuno, uh, I didn't get an email of any updates, um, but if there's no representative online or in person for Representative Mamie Zuno, um, you can send any questions to me so that I can email them to her.
Of course you do.
Or you're the one.
Doing my transportation, come on, yeah.
We'll, we'll look to that soon, sorry, I just wanna just be sure that if anyone had any questions to email me for, um, Mamie Zuno's office, but then now we can move on to community reports, um, for sidewalk S curve and transportation committee. So Chiri Kaike is not here, however, committee member Warren Orozaki, oh, Okazaki, um, I was mistaken, um, has something to say.
I contacted, um, Representative Zuno's office. They already have the working on the Hala Drive and Kapalama Avenue. So all I need to do is monitor, because they're suggesting, they're saying that this representative Zuno would not be running for reelection. So for me to monitor that, and as the new representative comes to, um, share what's going on with that Hala Drive and Kapalama Avenue, but they're doing all the work. They contacted the city and offered.
Is that from, from the, the?
That's from, yeah, that's from Zuno's office.
Thank you, and I already transitioned over to the committee, if you wanted to, if you haven't said it already, the update, was that it?
Yeah.
That was that too, okay, okay, so I wanted to be sure, um, yeah, and, um, I actually wanted to go back real quickly to your, um, um, idea of making a resolution committee. Um, I did talk with, um, Spencer, well, um, because we can, as individuals, we can just make a resolution, we can bring it to our board meetings. Um, like, we do have one resolution that Ikaike, um, actually submitted, which is the urging legislator to adopt good government reforms. So just wanted to let you know that, we don't need a committee to make resolutions, we can just do it on our own, and just have it ready to be, so that everyone can read it and.
I thought a committee had, I thought a resolution had to be approved by the board.
Right, so this, the board meetings.
Alright, so we can just write any resolution we want, because I'm gonna write fifty of them. So I'm writing one a week.
Yeah, that's honestly, yeah.
Alright, so I'm writing tons.
If you wanna send the drafts, because that way we can just give you the final document.
That, that's fine, but I thought, you know, you have a committee, and we can talk about what we wanna write, but I write, I got tons of, I got tons of resolutions.
Is that, is that what he was asking for, though?
Uh, that's what we're gonna do, because that's the power of the board, the board's write resolutions, we put a residue down on anything that we need to, that's in our community, and then we'll send it up the chain. I, I got a question, where do our resolutions go?
It can go wherever you want it to, so at the end of the resolution, you usually say who you wanna send it to, and I can help get it to any city departments, and I can help, I can help what I can, um, if I can find any state departments or whatever. I've had one sent to the President of the United States, I'm not sure if he got it and he read it, but we sent it to somebody.
Right, I read it. So it, it goes to those departments, that's why I want a committee, so those are the departments we can, I wanna track the update of the resolution, who got it, when they got it, uh, what their response to the resolution was. And then the second thing is, I checked our website, and we don't show the resolution, we rewrote last year. It's not on our website, asking the, asking the, the, the city and the mayor and them to have a phone resolution, so the people that pick up the phone will leave us our name and number, be nice. They're nasty, and some of them won't even tell you their name, which is outrageous for a city. But, uh, alright, if I can write them all, I'll be writing them all day.
Oh, could, could we, could we vote on that next month, I mean, like, to?
We can have any committee we want.
To see if we, we, we should have one committee.
Then we should, we'll vote on it next month, we'll put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that way, you know, I think, I think it's a good idea that we have a, um, resolution committee.
Or the committee, the only issue committee is that not all of the board members have to be there, and you want all the board members to vote on it, so that's why it has to be in the general meeting.
Right, yeah, they can do that.
Yeah, because.
I have a question for him really quick.
Yeah, you can, you can ask.
On all the, on all the, the, the signs that we put in for, like, the no parking signs or the update signs, the faded signs, they go through the transportation? Alright. Thank you.
Of course. Alright, um, and, yeah, so I believe that's, yes, so everything about committee reports and assignment, but next on the agenda is the adopting a resolution urging legislator to adopt good government reforms. So Ikaike requested this item on the agenda, he's not present, and requesting to postpone the item until November. However, if any board members would like to introduce the motion, um, that we can discuss and, uh, talk about why revisions are necessary, if you guys haven't had a chance to check it out.
We could just wait the next month, because our time is running.
Wait until next week.
We're waiting until later.
Yeah.
Time is running late.
Sorry, yeah, Mr.?
How about more reports, transportation?
Oh, oh, we've already moved, um, we just.
About more, more than I've reported.
Many reports.
Okay.
Because we're running late.
Okay, if you wanna, yeah, we can, I guess we can go back to transportation.
Okay, because this, um, it's kind of easy. The other side of the, um, what, um, the, um, Hala Drive and Kapalama Avenue, that's also been taken care of by Councilman, um, Santos Stan, they're gonna be handling that. On the other side, we have, um, Kala Niangre, uh, Akokan Street, Akokali, that's gonna be taken care of by, um, the Councilman Santos Stan too. That job is pretty easy, because below Camp Kameyamay School, there's no road. It's a, it's a cliff, so there cannot be any road connected to go down to Alava Heights. One vacant lot is from the bombing station. The other vacant lot cannot be used, because it starts with a steep incline and ends up at a brick wall, eight feet tall and twelve feet wide, so there's no road to be connected. So my job is come pretty easy. The other roof, the other land was, um, the, was built for a monster house, and they were told to order to tear down, that's the other empty lot, it's still sold yet. So as far as getting any further route down to, um, the floor of Alava Heights?
This is the Alava?
That's it?
Of course, we have to do it. Thank you, and, um, then we can go back, and if there's no objection to, um, this, um, no objection to, or no, um, motion to do the adoption, the resolution for urging legislator to adopt good government reforms, we can move on then to, um, approval of regular meeting minutes, Wednesday, August fourteen, twenty twenty-four, so can I get a motion?
I'll put a minute.
So moved, it's been moved by Mr. Franklin, any second. Seconded by Mr. Gotti, are there any discussions? If there's no further discussions, or even online, oh, Chester actually, uh, rose, has handled, I believe, yes.
Hey, um, I was kind of wondering, is Spencer responsible for, uh, putting the minutes together initially?
Correct, yes.
Okay, but I, part of my, um, uh, I guess more question and comment is that, uh, I found our last meeting minutes, uh, very sparse on detail. You know, simply stating that we had a discussion with the director from the Public Housing Authority. You know, doesn't, doesn't say very much about, we spent a good, uh, twenty, twenty minutes, discussed, having discussions with that fellow, and, uh, some suggestions were made, but none of that was reflected in the minutes. So anyway, just my, um, comment, uh, about, uh, how sparse the, uh, section on, on, on each subject there.
Thank you, um, I believe the, I was gonna say the minutes actually do have timestamps of the YouTube video recordings of our meetings, to show, to go and even, you know, like, the ingredients, exactly what happened in the meetings. Um, but of course, if you or anyone in the board or want to volunteer to edit the meetings, you know, with those details, if, um, then I would welcome that as well, so we can approve that, yeah, or Mr. Franklin.
Chester, that's why I asked for a communication committee, so we can put out a newsletter of our own, because I've had this battle already with the minutes before, and they can be bone bare. So if we have our own newsletter, we can put all the details, we want our newsletter and get it out to our community, to let them know that this board is really working hard for them.
Right.
We are working hard, we have issues, we have stuff, and that's why the communication, uh, 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 committee needs to get a newsletter out, we got a Facebook, we need, we need to put stuff out on our own. So, but yes, uh, but we had this battle before, and I went all the way up to NCO and the IOP and everything else, and Spencer's correct, he can bare-bone it, and, but it's our job to get our information out to our residents, because they elected us to this board. That's, that's one of the things that I was talking to Senator Kim about, we have to learn the power of this board, we have to learn the power of resolutions, we have to learn that when a committee gets an assignment, not just to have a committee, that this board, we need to have what you've done in a month, what projects you have, have it come to fruition, what have you done besides just showing up with your committee? We need to say what we did, we need to have, or what is the beautification committee? You had this project, has this project been completed in thirty days? Instead of going for a year and have nothing come to conclusion or fruition on this board. But it's this board's fault that we don't have our meetings, it's this board's fault that we have projects that don't get completed, and it's this board's fault that we don't have a newsletter showing them that we got signs put up, we got transit taking care of, we got this done. We have nothing to show what this board does. We have negated our own power, and it's our fault, we're like children who can't tie our own shoes. We keep asking people to tie our shoes, but to tie our own shoes. And that's why we have communication, that's why we need a resolution committee. We need things that this board was given per the mayor. And that's, I understand what your thing is, but that's why I'm telling this board, we have to step up.
If I could just go off of what Brandy said too, um, these minutes are your guys' minutes. So at any meeting, if you feel like you wanna add something to what I had put down, now would be the time to do it, after we were approving it. Um, Leeloh asked if there's any comments, that would be the time to make corrections.
That's right.
And you can also make additions.
Right.
So if you put a question in there, and, you know, it's hard for me to get everything and accurately do it, and then I'll put, if I go into a lot of detail, a lot of times I've been wrong, so it takes more time to like go back and correct all those things too. So this is really like an outline, basic thing, and if there's any specific section you guys want more information, you just gotta tell me what to put in it.
Right.
You know, and I like to get it in writing, so I can get it correct.
So that means when she said you, you approved of this meeting?
Yeah.
From last month, I can say I, I don't, because we wanna add in something, because things that wasn't fixed.
Yeah, so it's, it will be, it's not that you don't approve it, you're gonna approve it, but you're gonna approve it with corrections.
Corrections, yeah.
And so usually after, we need it to be moved and seconded, no matter what, and then Leeloh asked if there are any, um,
Discussion.
Discussion, it, basically you can ask if there's any corrections.
Okay, okay.
So then, at that point, you can add or take it out or change it. And you can, um, get these, I can send you these, the minutes that I have, and then you can go back. I have a member, uh, Connie O'Haze's neighborhood board, who I send him my draft, and then he goes and watches the video, and he actually puts in all the comments and questions and concerns at that, at the timestamp, like right after that, and there's a little paragraph. So, I mean, you guys can do as much, and you can also go back ten minutes that were already approved, and you can still make changes to very, you can always make changes.
Change number two later.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, as far as Mr. Franklin had mentioned about, um, yes, so that we can kinda like, make concern, good concern, and make good input on the committees, not as well, not only just committees, but the concerns from the citizens, the community.
Yep.
So that way we can kinda like get back and then get back for the next me- meeting. And it's in writing, because like when I was asking for the no parking, I, I'm pretty sure they had told me in their minutes, that that minute was like, yeah, it's Spencer made it, and then they, they approved, approved the no parking sign to go off. But they wasn't sure that it was supposed to be, they wasn't sure, they only was sure about, uh, they wasn't sure about by the bridge, because I, I keep track on this stuff.
Yeah.
Um, but anyway.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
Yeah.
It's, the, your minutes say where in the video you can find it.
Yep, so, um, so it's actually the first link on the top of the minutes have the, it's a YouTube link.
Yeah, YouTube.
Yeah.
So, and then we usually post the meeting on YouTube.
Yeah.
One day or two days after the meeting.
Channel forty-nine.
So you could probably watch it on Friday. And it, well, it's on a Lelo too, but YouTube goes up quicker.
I wonder if we could. I wanted to make a comment. Mister Franklin, that was the thing, I have a comment, I also think. It's the residents' job as well to also.
Chester has a panel, did you still have something to say, sorry?
That's a lot of work.
So she has a panel.
Okay, I, the other question I had is, uh, you know, you asked about, talked about the video, you know, only problem with it is, uh, is there, um, are all the past meeting, uh, archived as well?
Yes.
They, on YouTube, we've been doing this posting for I think a year, maybe a little more, couple of years. But, um, there might be video archive on Olelo, I don't know how far back they go. But I think they have a pretty big, they have a lot of meetings on, on Olelo, so you can just Google Olelo, um, programming.
Okay, good, thank you.
And then if you ever need, if you have a specific meeting or anything you wanna look at, just let me know and I can see what I have. If I have a, a WebEx recording too, you know, I, I, I probably have Kali Valley meetings since twenty twenty-one on my WebEx account, so.
Okay, well, part of my, um, kind of, uh, helping me remember things is that, you know, for, for the longest time, I was, uh, tracking the police department's statistics. You know, and, uh, from month to month, you know, it's kinda, you, you get the reports, but I'm checking what's going on, you know, sometimes it's, it's, uh, for me, it's kinda important, there may be trends going on or, or not going on. So anyway, uh, I, I didn't wanna take a whole lot of time, uh, discussing, uh, this matter, but, uh, I was just finding this particular set of minutes was, uh, kinda sparse of information.
If you have any corrections, um, or any of, yeah, anyone on the board have any corrections? Yeah.
Well, I, I, I do have, uh, a lot of areas, but, uh, you know, even like, uh, those items we discussed with Lynn Robinson. You know, they're not reflected in the minutes that it was covered, so, uh, I, I don't, you know, the problem is, I don't know where to start. Uh, because I would have, uh, comments on the, uh, report by Lynn Robinson, uh, the Public Housing Authority. And some of the other comedian, but anyway, I'll leave it at that and, uh, so we can just proceed to approve the minutes.
So just to reconfirm, no one else has any corrections or amendments? Um, because then we can start, um, approving the original, just wanna make it that clear that it's gonna be with, um, the draft that we have for August fourteen, twenty twenty-four. So, um, okay, if we're, um, no longer in discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
I.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Seeing and hearing none, the motion has been moved. And I believe next is just the announcements, I have no announcements except just happy holidays, um, happy, have a safe and happy Halloween, if you have plans that night. And, um, we can go into the announcement, announcements, which is the next meeting scheduled for Wednesday, November thirteen, twenty twenty-four at seven PM at Kapala Mahaly Room two-two-seven. We still have this room, and this is the last meeting of the year, or the November, um, thirteen will be the last meeting of the year, because we will recess in December, just to let everyone know. And broadcast meetings, neighborhood board meeting aired on Olelo Channel forty-nine on the fourth Saturday of the month at six PM and the first and third Sunday of the month at nine AM. And are there any more announcements? If there are no more announcements, then the meeting is adjourned.